All right, good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us. This is the Monday, May 6th, City Council meeting for Cedar Falls. I'd like to call this meeting into order. And Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Schultz, Latta.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Hallbaker.
Here.
Gannfield.
Here.
Chrisman.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And if willing and able, can everyone please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Now look for approval of the minutes of the regular City Council meeting of April 15th, 2024.
Second.
Motion in seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, any agenda revisions?
Item 12A on the consent calendar is being removed from the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And just a quick explanation for everyone. The individuals being appointed for a commission position, they got a new job, and they're no longer able to serve on that commission. So we will be looking for another person for the Bike and Pet Commission. All right, so we will now move on to the public forum. So speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics relevant to city business. I'll just clarify, we do have the pickleball discussion later on in the meeting, so that item, we will have public discussion on later. So you do not need to speak for that right now. So is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak tonight? Just name and city, and, oh, Dr. Blackwell. Well, Rosemary jumped out there since she's halfway there.
I'm halfway here on everything, right?
And welcome back, Rosemary.
I have been, oopsie. Rosemary Beach, Western Home. And I just wanted to come tonight and announce that we do have two new bathrooms in town. And I walked in the other day, and I asked very quietly if you would let me to look at your restrooms, which, and they were very nice. And they are large, and people can get around in them, and I highly praise people who go to the efforts that since I have been fighting for a year or two to get large enough restrooms for walkers and people to get in. And I, it is the new patent restaurant, and they were very nice about just letting me check out the bathroom, and I appreciated that. And I'm just wanting to say thank you. I wish the city, maybe they are part of it somewhere, I don't know, but it is nice to have two restrooms that have the enough equipment in them and enough space in them and open at reasonable hours. I think they're open from, there, I know they're doing just a soft opening, but eight until, I don't know how late they close. But it's nice to have that availability. So I just wanted to say I'm pleased that we have two new restrooms, and I, I'll think of something else that I want you to do surely before too long. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Just name and city, please.
Michael Blackwell. I'm from, I live in Cedar Falls. About a decade and a half ago, the state legislature decided to agree upon having racial impact statements for any new law or program or policy that affected the judicial system. After a few years, there was a, an opportunity to try to get it to expand for all new laws, but the state legislature didn't agree to that. And of course nowadays with, you know, attack on diversity, equity, and inclusion kinds of things, it makes it even harder to get the legislature to do something about it. Wisconsin, Minnesota, Illinois, and Nebraska, what do these contiguous states and Iowa have in common, I mean, to Iowa have in common? According to the digital research company, 24/7 Wall Street, we are one of the, we are each of us, one of the worst states for black Americans to live in this country. Wisconsin is number one in the recent May 2nd report, and Iowa is number two. And because of the long history of persistent racism and concomitant racial disparities, the quality of life of blacks in the Midwest is poor and marginalized. The devastating report is more revolting because the Waterloo-Cedar Falls area, as we know, is the sixth worst place in this nation for blacks to live, with Des Moines and Davenport following close behind at 11th and 13th respectively. So what are we going to do about this horrific situation and heinous criminal history? Business as usual won't cut it. Institutional injustice is too overwhelming to be lackadaisical about the urgent need of our citizens. Whereas I don't want to neglect the concerns of others, especially those marginalized in our area and the state and region, it is clear that blacks have had a target on their backs since the mid-19th century and the end of slavery. Decades regarding affirmative action and diversity training have scarcely diminished the multiple and cumulative effects of racial discrimination. And nothing will alter these dynamics in the foreseeable future if we do not diligently and indefatigably seek to abrogate the structures, processes, policies, and services that suppress the ability of the masses of black citizens residing here to achieve the inalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. There must be a central and concerted effort to dismantle and eliminate racial policies, behaviors, and traditions in any strategic plan in this area and across the Midwest. In any community vision, there must be specific goals and objectives, both quantitative and qualitative, directed towards expunging the evil of racism from our body politic. I realize that is an ostensibly insurmountable or insuperable task, but it will only succeed through onerous and painstaking labor. So the question is, what kinds of things are we going to do to attack this problem, which is an inveterate problem in our system, and sometimes it seems that it doesn't exist because it seems so subtle? But the inertia of racism is really affecting black people in this metro area, and we need to tackle it as best as we can and really direct our attention to these problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Blackwell. Just name and city, please.
My name is Lawrence Stummey, and I live in Waterloo. Last week, on May 2nd, 24/7 Wall Street published their latest report entitled, "The Worst States for Black Americans: Every State Ranked." Iowa was ranked as the second worst state. This rating is based on race-based gaps in eight areas. Number one, median household income. Number two, poverty rates. Number three, adult high school completion rates. Four, bachelor's degree attainment rates. Five, homeownership. Six, unemployment rates. Seven, incarceration by rate by race. And eight, age-adjusted mortality rate by race. In every one of these areas, blacks suffer a great disparity between their white neighbors. From March 20th, 2022, to when Iowa was ranked the third worst state, to May 2nd, 2024, Iowa has dropped to the second worst state, second to Wisconsin. In that same area, in 2018, Waterloo-Cedar Falls was ranked as the worst. And the most recent report says they're the sixth. They have moved up, but the state of Iowa has moved down on those criteria. The second-place ranking for Iowa speaks volumes about the state leadership in Des Moines. This May 2nd report should wake up the nation, should wake up the state of Iowa, the industrial complexes and financial institutions that are in our community, and all of the government agencies that are in this area. We must and we can do something about it. As our president has said, there is nothing we can't do if we put our minds to it. Our thanks to the city of Waterloo. When the city first heard about the 24/7 report in 2018 saying Waterloo-Cedar Falls was the worst, they hired a consultant called De Nova, and they came up with a plan called Waterloo 2030 Community Vision. This plan is a beautiful plan and identifies eight areas that need concern, especially housing area. They propose from 2000 to the year 2030, there would be 800 new or remodeled residences in our community, 100 a year. The eighth part of this plan is beautiful. It identifies the problem beside, behind the Waterloo-Cedar Falls ranking. It takes the time and leadership and thousands and millions of dollars to deal with these problems. Because of lacks of funds, this plan has been ignored and has stalled. Hopefully, this report that we got from 24/7 will give us the incentive to do something about it. With this new shocking report, the world, because the world is concerned, if in the UN you ask, if they said, "Where in the United States would we go to help the poor?" Because United Nations is also supposed to be for the poor, they would say Waterloo-Cedar Falls, because we are the worst, or the down, we were the worst, now we're sick. We need the state, the business and financial institutions, and all of us to step up and support this vital effort. We, thanks to 24/7, we now have evidence. We must wake up. We need to work together. We need funding from the government, industry, and private sectors by the millions. We need to face and deal and save Iowa, Waterloo, and other cities identified with these reports, but especially the people who are affected by these reports, the ones who live in slum housing, the one who don't have adequate schools or care for their children. We can solve these problems, but it needs all of us. We've got to find a way. We've got to find a way. Thank you.
Just name and city, please.
Carol Leeds, 1802 Orchard Drive. I just have a quick question. I noticed in the paper, one of the issues tonight is they're going to close on the demolition of two properties, and so I was kind of curious about that, because I always think if you're going to demolish a property that's rundown, shabby, you know, something's wrong with it. So especially the one on, at 1218 Cottage Row Road, because my lot on the river is two doors down from there. So I went out there, and I drove by it, finally found it. I do suggest that Cottage Row Restaurants residents put their addresses on the mailboxes or someplace on the house. I finally identified the place, and it is the one that's one up from my lot. And I walked around there, I looked, I thought, "This place isn't rundown. Why are they tearing it down?" And then on Black Hawk County, it looks like the, there's a name as the owner, whereas the 523 West First Street had, City of Cedar Falls owns it. So I was just wondering what was going on.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
And then we can make sure, I can get your contact info, and we can have staff follow-up with you with an answer on that. Anyone else for public comment? Just name and city, please.
Hi, everyone. Isaac Motta, Waterloo, Iowa. I'm just up here to say that I appreciate all the time I was able to spend with the directors and staff, and I was very thankful to have this position as intern of the city. And I'd just like to say thank you to all. Be really quick.
I just want to say thank you to you as well, Isaac. I know you've gotten around to all the departments. We have a kind of rotating program at the city where city administrator, people going to U and I for any school, but for city administration, get a chance to see all the departments, and Isaac's been going through all of ours, and always had a chance to talk to a lot of us and staff. So council, anything you want to say with Isaac heading out?
Hannah and I got to sit with Isaac the other day at the business and industry, oh, and Councilman Gannfield, we all three of us. He was at the table we were sitting at. Isaac grew up, I believe, Evansdale, right, Isaac?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's nice to have, you know, local young person, just, I don't know, anytime I can sit for a bit and break bread and just hear what he's learned, it was very much appreciated. So thank you.
All right, anyone else for public comment tonight? All right, seeing none, we will now move on to our staff updates. Staff, have any updates? I know we got a few.
Yes, Mayor, I think I'll have Director Birdy give you a couple of updates in public safety.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. I've got a couple of updates. They really, they both deal with citizen events that are going on. The first one is this Thursday night. We're going to have an open house out at Public Safety, out by the fairway there at Greenhill in South Main. It's Thursday, May 9th, from 4:30 to 7:00, and we'll have our staff and our equipment out there on display, along with the Sheriff's Department, U and I Police, and Mercy One Paramedic Services. So inviting everybody to come out Thursday night, 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. Fairway's providing food. They're fantastic partners. And the other one, I'm just going to read so I don't mess it up. It's next Wednesday, it's the Peace Officer Memorial. In honor of National Police Week, the Cedar Falls Public Safety Department and the Cedar Falls Police Department will host the annual Peace Officers Memorial Service for Black Hawk County on May 15th at 10:00 a.m. So that's next Wednesday, 10:00 a.m. The service will recognize and remember Black Hawk County peace officers who have died in the line of duty. The event will take place here in Cedar Falls at Overman Park, and parking is available around Overman Park. And so we rotate that through all the police departments in the county, and this is the year that Cedar Falls will host it. And it's next Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. in beautiful Overman Park.
Thank you, Craig.
Mr. Mayor, one more. Director Sheets will talk a little bit about our Panthers on Parade.
So we're hoping that people have been out and about already this weekend to see our 27 life-size fiberglass TC mascot statues that have been placed all over the community in different sponsor locations throughout Cedar Falls and the Cedar Valley. These mascots will be on display now through October of this year, so plenty of time for everybody to get to see those. If you're wondering where those are, there's information right outside. We have a tour book if you want to use that, or a map with all of the different statues on the back of it, and some fun facts that you can write down and enter to win prizes. So take advantage of those, or if you want more for anybody, they're at the Tourism Center out on Hudson Road. There is also an app that you can download for free, so you can go to PanthersOnParade.com and learn more about that. Just some statistics, over the weekend, we had 4,000 visits to the website already since we've started the program, and over 225 people using the app. So, so far, very popular.
And quick, I'll give a shout out just to the businesses. So all these were sponsored by Private Dollars. They were about $5,000 apiece, so we had over $100,000 from businesses go toward doing these. And the artists got paid. So if anyone here has ever been an artist, you know, sometimes that piece gets overlooked a little bit. So this was a really good project to be able to partner with you and I and work with the arts and the community, and it's a really good opening over at you and I, so. Anything else from staff? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a quick one. Gil is trying to get in, and his link is not working. If somebody can help him with that?
I think he did finally get in.
He's on the phone, I thought, for sure.
Yeah, and thank you for reminding me. I should announce, Gil Schultz is...
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yep, we got you, Gil.
I had a text that said he was...
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Gil. So if anybody was thinking of talking bad about Gil, he's here. Shucks. All right, move on to Special Order of Business. Item number two, a public hearing on the proposed plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the 2024 alley reconstruction project. Do we have motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of hearing? Motion in seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Gil. I'll remember the delay for a second for you. So all those opposed? All right, that motion passes. So Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
And then we have staff comments on this item from whoever my notes say is going to have Brett. All right, sorry. Thank you, Brett.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Tonight's public hearing is for the 2024 Alley Reconstruction Project. This project involves the reconstruction of five alleys, three of which are concrete and two are permeable alleys. Work includes excavation, backfill, sidewalk, subdrain installation, placement and storage filter, and storage and filter aggregate, installation of permeable pavers, seating, driveway placement, and PCC paving. The total estimated cost for construction of this project is $582,973. This project will be funded by the Stormwater Fund, Street Construction Fund, and the Watershed DNR Grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. And just if I'm correct in hearing this, I think the grant helped pay for one of the permeable...
Yes, yes, the grants for one of the permeable...
Thank you. All right, so then we will move on. Any public comments on this item for tonight? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and look for a resolution approving and adopting the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the 2024 alley reconstruction project.
Move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed on this?
Aye.
It is roll call. It's roll call.
It's just roll call. Sorry. Mr. Mayor? Oh, sorry. And then we'll open it up for, sorry, yes, thank you. Open it up for discussion before we do the roll call. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I think we've seen some of these converted over to the permeable alley where it's applicable, and even the ones that are going to be hard-surfaced, it helps mitigate all the gravel runoff that happens with our torrential downpour that we're looking forward to this evening. So I'm in full support of this continued conversion. Obviously, permeable where we can, even though it's costly, it helps with the water runoff and slows it down, so good work on the project. I'm in support of it.
Any other council discussion?
Just a quick question. It may have been somewhere before, the alleys that are identified for improvement here, is there a list somewhere that...
Yes, I have them here. I can name them off. The permeable alleys are from 11th to 12th, Bluff and Grove, 14th to 15th, Washington and Clay, and then for concrete alleys, 1st, 2nd, Washington and Main, 3rd to 4th, State and Main, and then 5th to 6th, Franklin and Clay.
Okay. Do we have a listing of what might be next year? Because I think, Chase, we talked once about an alley near the campus that was problematic.
Yeah, we have a five-year program. We can send you that information.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other council discussion, comments? All right, seeing none, we will look for a roll call vote. Why are you laughing, Jerry?
I'm just going to say aye.
All right, thank you, Gil.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion passes. Item number three, public hearing on the proposed plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the 2024 Sidewalk Assessment Project Zone 6. Do we have a motion to receive and file proof of publication, and notice of hearing?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None that motion carries. So any written communications, Madam Clerk?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
And then we have staff comments from City Engineer David Wiki. He's walking in from the cheap seats.
They're not bad seats out there. All right, good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. Tonight's public hearing is for the 2024 Sidewalk Assessment Project. This will be in Zone 6. The project involves a replacement of deficient sidewalks adjacent to various property owners. The project will replace deficient sidewalk for the adjacent property owner and assess the cost of the replacement back to that property owner. The Department of Justice every year, or the Department of Justice requires communities to keep sidewalks in compliance with ADA standards. So to stay in compliance, the city has developed this sidewalk assessment program that goes into different zones. The city's divided up into 10 zones, and each year we go into a new zone to do our sidewalk assessment. Once the replacements have been completed, the Engineering Division will submit a bill to the city clerk. The city clerk will then send notices of the bill in the mail to the property owners. The property owners will then have 30 days to pay that bill without any interest or penalty. If the property owner doesn't pay that bill within the 30 days, then that cost, that replacement gets assessed on their property taxes. For this year's assessment, the total engineering estimated cost was $5,470, 547,606.50. Thanks.
And do we have any public comments on this item tonight? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve a resolution adopting the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of costs for the 2024 Sidewalk Assessment Project Zone 6.
So moved.
Second. Motion in seconded, and council discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cruz.
Mr. Wiki, is the $547,000, if nobody did their own work, is that how you come up with that number? Because I think there's a listing of the ones that we had charged to their property tax. That was what, $13,000 or some number, quite a bit less?
So this assessment cost was, at the time of bidding the project, everyone that has not done their, has not replaced their sidewalks on their own yet. So this is a list of everybody that's been assessed who has not done the replacement themselves yet.
Zone 6, I think it said. Have these people had their year time period to do their sidewalk work?
They were notified, there's two notification that goes out, there's a notification that goes out early fall in 2023, and then there's an early spring, late winter, early spring notification notifying them again to, you know, if they choose to replace the sidewalk panel themselves.
Usually it's maybe a dozen people that don't do it. That's why I'm kind of surprised that $547,000 worth of people didn't do their sidewalk.
Yeah, this was, this was a big zone this year. We had a fair number of deficient sidewalks that we noted.
Okay.
So, yeah, a little bit bigger than in recent years past.
Any other council discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Mr. Wiki, what color are the dots on the sidewalk?
So they're, they're pink. We use pink paint.
So if you have a pink dot on your sidewalk, you know what it's for?
We, we also mark them with the code. So when we send out the letters, we also send out the deficiencies, and they're all labeled a letter number, a letter A, B, C, D, E, and there's a description that tells what that deficiency is. So we'll also put, you know, the letter of the deficiency on the panel when we mark it.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, that then requires a roll call vote.
Schultz, aye.
Thanks, Gil.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item number four, public hearing on the proposed amendments to the city's fiscal year 2024 budget. Do we have motion to receive and file proof of publication, and notice of hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in seconded, and a voice vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, seeing none, the motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And then we have staff comments from Lisa Roding. Thank you, Lisa.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Directors. Tonight's, the third public hearing, is for the fiscal year 2024 budget amendments. The budget was approved a year ago, April 3rd, so it has been over a year, and estimates can be amended or increased as the time arises. The budget amendments you have before you are due to timing of capital projects and participation in grant programs. Also included in these amendments are the line item adjustments for the various departments. In the notice, you might have seen that there was increases to seven of the nine programs. The nine programs are public... The nine programs are public safety, public works, cultural and rec, community and economic development, general government, debt service, capital projects, and business services. Health and social services, too. The increases were you, increases were covered by underspent line items and additional revenues and cash reserves. The additional revenues are coming from intergovernmental, miscellaneous, charges for services, other financing sources, and some special assessments. The budget amendment process is done in a similar way as the original budget is approved, and I do have to file it with the county auditor by May 31st.
Thank you, Lisa. Any public comments on this item? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and look for a motion to resolution approving and adopting amendments to the city's fiscal year 2024 budget.
So moved. Second.
Been motioned and seconded and open for council discussion. Seeing none, Gil, anything? Give you a second.
No.
Okay. All right, seeing none, then we will look for a roll call vote on this, please.
Gil, do you have a aye or a nay? Vote, please.
Schultz, aye.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that motion carries. All right, move on to item number five, hearing on proposed resolution adopting levying the final schedule of assessments for the 2023 sidewalk assessment project, Zone One. And for that, we have staff comments from David Wiki.
Once again, good evening, Mayor, Council. This hearing is for the final schedule of assessment for the 2023 sidewalk assessment project, Zone One. Sidewalk assessment project is, program is divided into 10 different zones in the city. The 23 assessment was for Zone One, in which we marked sidewalks with deficiencies, and then those sidewalk panels were replaced as part of the project. Property owners were given notices in the fall of 2022, and then again in the spring of 2023 that gave them the specific timeframe in which they had to be able to complete those repairs if they wanted to do them themselves prior to the city's contractor going in and doing the work. Once the work is completed, the bill is generated and sent to those property owners, giving them 30 days to pay for the repairs. If the property owner doesn't pay, then it gets forwarded to the county and the payment for the repairs assessed on their tax bill. There is a list in your agenda packet, highlighted in yellow, of the properties that are being assessed for the 2023 sidewalk assessment.
Thank you, David. And then for this item, for any respondent comments, this is only for those who are being assessed on this, not for public comment. So is there anyone here who's on that list of individuals being assessed that would like to speak tonight? Wait, just in case someone's out in the hall. All right, seeing none, we will close the hearing and look for a resolution adopting and levying the final schedule of assessments for the 2023 sidewalk assessment project, Zone One.
So moved. Second.
Motion and seconded, and any council discussion? All right, seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Schultz, aye.
Thank you, Gil.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that motion passes. Now move on to old business. So item number six, pass ordinance number 3054, amending Chapter 17, Parks and Recreation of the Code of Ordinances relative to the Art and Culture Center and Board upon its third and final consideration. Do we have a motion to approve?
All sort of move.
Second.
Motion and seconded, you get those? And then, any council discussion? All right, seeing none, any discussion from the public? Also seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
Schultz, aye.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Item number seven, pass ordinance number 3055, amending Chapter 17, Parks and Recreation of the Code of Ordinances relative to the Visitors and Tourism Board upon its third and final consideration. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, and any council discussion? And any discussion from the public? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Schultz, aye.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Item number eight, pass ordinance number 3056, amending Chapter Two, Administration of the Code of Ordinances relative to Boards and Commissions and the Department of Community Development upon its third and final consideration. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, and any council discussion? Seeing none, any discussion from the public? Also seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Schultz, aye.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number nine, pass ordinance number 3057, amending Chapter Two, Administration of the Code of Ordinances relative to the Department of Community Development upon its third and final consideration. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, and any council discussion? Seeing none, any discussion from the public? Also seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Schultz, aye.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number 10, pass ordinance number 3058, amending Chapter Two, Administration of the Code of Ordinances relative to compensation of Division Six Utilities Board of Trustees upon its second consideration. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion and seconded, any discussion from council? And any from the public? All right, seeing none, a roll call vote, please.
Schultz, aye.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That will move us on to the consent calendar. So the following items will be acted upon, acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Are there any requests for items from the consent calendar that be considered separately from the council?
Mr. Mayor? Number 11, 12, and 15.
I'm told 15. Any others from council? All right, all those seeing none, more, any from the public? All right, seeing none, look for a motion to approve items number, let's see, what do we have in here? All the rest. All the rest. 11 through 17 excluding items 11, 12, and 15.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, and all those in favor? Or, do we need discussion on that? So any discussion from the public on those? Any from council?
I don't think, Mr. Mayor, point of order, do we do a discussion if we've, because right now we're putting it on the whole, right? Okay.
Okay. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries. So we will now look to go to item number 11. To receive and file the City Council Standing Committee minutes of April 15, 2024, relative to the following item, a discussion on regular council meetings to be held on Tuesdays. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion, motion and second, and open for council discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to bring this one up. I think this was a great discussion that we had, and if folks have questions or if they are curious about the chosen night of our council meetings, I think that this is a good conversation to reference for the future. If we are ever considering again potentially moving the meeting, we can use this as a reference. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. Any other discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, we will move to look for approval. So this item requires a roll call vote, so all those, or excuse me, a voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And all opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries. Then we'll look to item number 12 to approve the following recommendations of the mayor relative to the appointment of members to the boards and commissions. Item number A, if you remember, has been removed from this. So item B, Gretchen Harkin Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission, term ending 9/30/28. Cindy Wiles, Board of Rental Housing Appeals, term ending 5/1/28. Erin Heyman, Heyman Rights Commission, term ending 7/1/25. And Mary Beth Sonnison, Utilities Board of Trustees, term ending 8/31/2030. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded and open for council discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to pull this one, one to thank the folks that are volunteering their time to serve on our many boards and commissions, and also Administrator Gaines, if you could share where folks could find the information for the application to volunteer for one of these positions, that'd be great.
Sure, we have all of the board applications on our website, and I couldn't point to it exactly right now, but if you contact anybody at City Hall, we can go ahead and, and get you connected to an application, so. And like you said, there's very, various boards and commissions out there, and it seems like we're always in need of good volunteers, so.
If I could just follow up, if you go to our website and you click on our Government and Boards and Commissions, right under that tab, there is a part that talks about why get involved, and then it has the application form there.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And I will say, even if it looks like they're all full and there are positions, we do have a lot of people who have to remove themselves or resign beyond just their term date. So if you have an application in, then we will always refer back to those who have already applied when we're looking to reach out to those when we have a new opening. So even if you're just interested, and there's not an opening, I'd recommend applying in there, so. Any other discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Just seeing that Ms. Sonnison's here, just thank you for volunteering for this.
So, and for those that don't know, the Utility Board of Trustees, the CFU's Board, it's a longer-serving term, much more time involved, and it's one of those that takes a lot of effort. Having worked briefly in the utility world, there's a lot that goes into those discussions, so thank you for, how many years of service to this point? 12? So, thank you for another six? Question mark?
Question mark.
Any further council discussion? All right, seeing none, we're, voice vote, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? And then that motion carries. Item number 15, receiving file the biannual report of Community Main Street relative to fiscal year '24 self-supporting municipal improvement district, the SMID, funds and fiscal year '24 economic development grant. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded and council discussion.
Mr. Mayor, sorry for taking all the airtime today, but I just wanted to, first of all, thank Kim and Cassidy and Heather for completing this report. Our downtown is incredible, as so many of you know, and completing this report can be pretty time-consuming as someone who's worked on a report for a SMID district as well. And, you know, I think it's great to recognize all of the changes that have happened downtown. We have a new business that opened today, and we've got some folks who are leaving, so we'll have some new space. You know, the downtown is ever-changing, and the folks that volunteer their time to make downtown what it is, and the folks that are paid employees, they're all really important. And I hope that we can see some of that momentum move to other places in our community as well. I think there's a lot of room for that to happen all over Cedar Falls, so that's just a testament to our community. So thanks, everyone who, again, volunteers and puts their time and effort into downtown.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Speaking of volunteering, I think it was interesting at the Overman Awards, the Who Heard, which is an extension for Holiday Hoopla through Community Main Street, won a John Milton Overman Award this last week. I thought that was really cool. I'm also going to say, I'll give some time to Kim if she'd like to speak, so feel free to come on in for that, but I wanted to share a brief story I heard just this afternoon out at the pickleball court. There were two younger men, I presuppose that they were college-age, and they were very flattered because they had already graduated, but one that had come in from Waterloo asked me specifically, because we talked about being on council, whether I was behind the volleyball game on Main Street, the sand volleyball game on Main Street last year. I said absolutely not, credited to Community Main Street for that, but Kim, we need volunteers for those types of things to happen again this next year, right? If you'd like to say a couple of words about those opportunities or other items, feel free.
You all know I hide out there. You're not supposed to pull this on the agenda.
He was talking to you, I'm like, I don't see her.
Yeah. I got, I got the cheap sheets, seats today, so I appreciate you pulling in. I appreciate you talking about the volunteers, all the businesses that make downtown go around. We could not do it without the community that's down there to really make it thrive. I would implore all of you in the room to really make a conscious effort to support local, as we do have some businesses who are really struggling in the retail world that we have right now. So before you add something to your cart, that's super easy to do on your phone, I would ask you to just take an extra step and go downtown and support those businesses because they are all just really great humans as well. So, thank you to Dustin that we were able to award the Who Heard, who are some of my favorite people on the planet, who make sure Santa arrives every year in a new and different way. And we will also, Brian Heath, I also know you're here tonight, so we will hopefully also be putting loads of sand on the street in September.
And I do want to give a shout-out while you're here, that Main Street did win the state tourism awards for the street party last year, so.
Well done.
It just took a lot of volunteers.
It's a lot of volunteers, so I can't even take any credit for it other than hurting the cats some days, so they're a lot of great people, so, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Kim.
Any other council discussion? All right, seeing none, any public comments? I also seeing none, then it records a voice vote, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? And that motion carries. And now we will move to our resolution calendar. So the following items will be acted upon by a roll call vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. So are there any requests for items on the resolution calendar to be considered separately from the council?
51 and 52.
Thank you, Gil. Any others? All right, seeing none, any from the public? In case you're wondering, those are the two items relating to pickleball.
Yes. Hello, my name is Mary O'Shaughnessy.
Just point of order.
Oh.
Just asking if items should be polled yet.
So you're just, are you asking to poll an item?
Oh.
We'll get to the public comment in just a second.
Mark did it.
Just remember that later. So any other items to be polled other than 51 and 52 from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll look for a motion to approve items 18 through 62 excluding items number 51 and 52.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Schultz, aye.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I hate to do this, but can we take like a five-minute break? I have a feeling it's going to be a long little session, and I want to be able to give full attention.
Yep, if everyone's comfortable with that?
Sure.
We'll take a quick five-minute break, so we'll be back here at just about 51 after. Thank you, everyone. What's on time for an ending?
Yeah, that's true.
All right, if everyone could take their seats, we'll get back to it. Thooting you, Gil, wherever you're at. All right. Gil, just going to do a check, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yep, yep, got you. All right, we will bring this meeting back to order, and we now are considering items number 51 and 52. Let me see here, up, of the resolution calendar. Council, quick, I'll look, these are two items that do go together, so if everyone's, do we can, would you like to do them separately, or? Take them together?
Together's fine with me.
I'd like to take them together.
Yep, okay. Okay, we will look then for a motion to approve items number 51 and 52 together.
So moved. Second.
It's been motion and seconded and we will now, we do have a quick staff update just from the last conversations, so I believe, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I'll pull up the Okay, talking about the Orchard Hill Park pickleball expansion. As you can see from the photo, that's our 2022 picture when the first set of pickleball courts are there. You can see the existing tennis courts, you can see the cracks in them from here, you can see they were rough. You can see the parking lot is needing some attention as well. And some of the other goals of the project were to enhance the park facilities. You know, we want to have nice parks, we want to make them a draw for people. We want to enhance the community, we want to make the community appealing, so people want to buy houses close to Orchard Hill Park. And we wanted to address the water runoff. The Seal Cult parking lot was there, it's actually tipped a little bit to the north. When we got heavy rain, some of those backyards to the north there flooded. We had a, we had a problem with the storm sewer in the southwest corner, the runoff from that, so the need was definitely there. This was a project that was coming. I touched on this last council meeting a little bit, this is the timeline that I kind of went through in a hurry, but this is just breaking it down a little bit more. You can see from July 2022 all the way up to now, all the thought process, all the work that's been done by the city, the pickleball club, the Park and Rec Commission, you know, they've addressed this multiple times at multiple meetings. We just really feel like there was a lot of due diligence and thought process that went into the project to where we are. This is the proposed layout. You can see the new parking lot there. You can see the proposed eight courts going almost over the identical footprint of the tennis courts. You can see the detention basin along the west side. You can see the new drive that's being implemented all the way out to Primrose, that was a concern as well. So when we had our Park and Rec meeting out at Orchard Hill Park, you know, we wrote a letter to the neighbors, tried to get them there to hear their concerns, and noise was one, location was one, and too many people. Those are the three major concerns that they had. So we'll try to break these down a little bit. Noise, we had fencing in the original plan with windscreen, wind slats, trying to reduce some of the noise. We've such then, after Park and Rec's recommendation, we went out and found acoustic block, and I'll just show you a quick example. That is the material that's going to help reduce noise quite efficiently, and there are studies done. The company that manufactures that product has worked with forty-four other cities in the nation. Apparently, we're not the only one with noise problems. A number of HOA's, community, private community events like country clubs, things like that, this is what they do for a living and I feel like they're really good at it, and if you're looking at that product, I feel it's a really good product. They have done noise studies to talk about the reduction of costs, they're at great length. I won't go through all of them tonight, but I have them here if anybody wants to take a look at them. And the other thing we're going to do with, with the acoustic block fencing is put up some live fencing, but this is actually a video that comes from their website, and we'll just watch this for a second, I hope the sound is on. So you can see there are quite a few people playing. So you can see there's a pretty significant decibel change with that acoustic fence that's there. The other thing we talked about doing was putting in a live fence. You can see in this green area there, that's the spot west of the fence and between the detention basin. The plan is to work with the city arborist to do some sort of evergreen live fence to be planted between there two, behind the acoustic fence. So we really feel like doubling up that protection is really going to benefit the people on the west side who's as close to the pickleball courts as possible. The location of the courts, we did look at other parks all over the town. There's just not a good layout with ample parking like Orchard Hill Park, thank you. We looked and relooked and relooked, Park and Rec tasked us with that. We just really feel this is our only spot to have this sort of complex was Orchard Hill Park. Now, if you're talking about the actual location of the courts in Orchard Hill Park, we did do that too. You could see the new courts were first proposed to the east of the existing courts. That doesn't really solve the problems for the neighbors, it just pushes it on to other neighbors, but the biggest thing there is the elevation. What this doesn't show, or that black line is, there's a significant water berm that goes through there, and those courts would have to be up much higher than the other courts. So anytime you have different elevations for, for safety, you're going to need some sort of retaining wall there with a rail on it and a bridge to get from one courts to the next, and that is significantly more expensive and again, doesn't really solve any of the problems. So moving the court south of the existing courts, again, it's, it's kind of in the middle of that black line, which is the natural runoff for water. And if we went any further south in that black line, right now, if we get a heavy rain, even though it's grass, we do get runoff across that baseball field because it is all pitched to the west, and it, we lose a lot of material off that field during heavy rains, and putting, you know, asphalt one forty by one forty pad right there would just make that problem worse. So that was, that was a deciding factor, and the other one is, you know, this is still a park. We want people to come out to this park and play soccer and play flag football and utilize that green space to fly a kite, and, and putting it there would really eliminate any of those options and make this really a pickleball and baseball park, which is not the goal of, of the parks program. Too many people, that, that's a concern too. The 1996 Parks' Master Plan excerpts kind of addressed that a little bit, they talk about it. The original park was built in 1962, which is sixty-two years ago. I'm assuming when the city put that park in, they didn't think those amenities were going to last forever, and I'm sure they did not want to see once those amenities fizzled out, nothing come back in and replace them. So we are looking at freshening up the park and making it attractive as well, and that is going to bring people, and that's a good thing for the city. With the parking lot expansion, it'll help people park there directional-wise, so they're not all scattered out. It will address some of our ADA. Right now, we don't have any handicap parking out there, this will take care of that too. And the drive will allow for two-way traffic. A late add, which was another great point, was the red line there you see by the drive. We're talking about a sidewalk, which allows people to enter the park off a sidewalk, which is a safety thing, and it's a great idea. And the other thing that makes this a little bit of a, of a draw is we did put in a restroom there because of the amount of people in there. We just upgraded the shelter to a bigger shelter because we do want more people in there, and now we're just trying to do it right. Here's a breakdown of the project's costs. Tonight, the blue arrow, you can see the only thing on tonight's action is the parking lot, driveway, eight courts and stormwater runoff plan. That's the only thing on the agenda, the shelters in, the fencing and courts are, and surfacing are being bid right now. And again, the live planting and landscaping will happen after the rest of it's in there. So you can see the CIP estimate, you can see the private funding that went into that. So our staff recommendation is to proceed with the Orchard Hill Pickleball Court Expansion Project, directing staff to include the noise dampening screen on the west side of the courts, the evergreen trees on the west side of the new courts, the sidewalk to the entrance, and also, which I haven't talked about, is a stop sign for the southbound McLean, which does require an ordinance change. And after this, I'll open it up to public comment, and I'll take questions too, but we just heard a citizen talk about volunteers and how important they are to a city and, and how many great things they can accomplish, which you have them. We got a whole bunch of volunteers here trying to do great things and, and they're great people too. I work with them, so thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Counsel, would you guys like to open it up to public comment first before we have our council discussion?
Works for me.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have a couple clarifying questions for staff first, or?
So okay, we do clarifying questions first before we start lobbying?
Yep, go for it.
Well, I do have a question regarding locations.
Yeah, go ahead, Gil.
So my question to Mr. Sapi is if we've looked at all the rest of the city, we can't find a spot to put some of these courts in, what are we going to do in the future? Because we're, are we going to put all our eggs in one basket here? This is going to be where someone from North Cedar wants to come and play pickleball, or are they going to end up?
That's a great question. I think this is the best location now that can happen. That's not to say nothing can be developed going forward down the road, but as far as construction costs, parking lot cost, ample parking, right now, this is what we staff feels is the best location.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Counsel, would you have a field?
Mr. Sapi, you probably don't get to sit down much right now, but I wanted to ask, I think, we had talked a little bit earlier today, but it might be a double question for Mr. Sapi and Mr. Gaines, but if we at this juncture, for the entrance to the parking lot, reduced it down to the one way that is there today that has been successful for sixty-two years, thank you for that number, I didn't know that, if we reduced it down to a single lane, that would mean less encroachment on the neighboring properties, probably saving and not even putting into question the mature trees that are there, is that an option at this juncture to change the plans with Aspro's bid, or would that be a future change if we choose to do that route?
I can probably address that question, Mr. Gaines.
Sorry, I didn't name it.
So, so yeah, right, right now, currently, the driveway from the face of curb to the face of curb, because there'll be curbs on each side of that driveway, is twenty-one feet. We can reduce it down to an error width and still accommodate for a sidewalk on the east side of the driveway. It will be right behind the back of curb, about four feet wide, and that's something that we can change order in after the, after the letting, so that's, that's not a problem.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification, that's all I had. And, and just, so that would all be on city property? So just as a clarifying. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sapi, could you explain the agreement between the pickleball club and the times posted on the courts for use?
Sure. With the current courts that are there now and the pickleball's contribution to that project, the city made a partnership with them rather than, you know, them renting and reserving the courts every day or every week or however they wanted to do it, because they gave such a financial contribution, they decided on a time. At, at that time, a lot of retired people were playing, so that seven to ten window wasn't in high demand, and the city said, hey, look, we have this time slot here, is that agreeable to you? And it was Monday through Fridays, seven to ten or seven thirty to ten thirty, something like that, and they were very agreeable to that. And that's one of the problems we have now is there's so many people, those courts are so full during that timeframe that you might have thirty people waiting to play. I do know the pickleball people have never chased anybody off. They're a great organization, they're looking to recruit members, they're very welcoming, so if, if you did want to play, I'm sure they could hook you up.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sapi, could I piggyback on that question, the signage that exists there, how long is the signage referencing the, the timing of that agreement been there?
I'm assuming since the first set of courts was built five years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Any other clarifying questions before we open it up to public comment?
I'll, I'll hold my last one, that's fine, thanks.
Okay, at this point, then we will open it up to public comments, so everyone has up to five minutes to speak on the side them, and we will just kind of, you want to jump since you. Yeah, and we can go, just to start, we'll go back and forth between those who support the project and those who are opposed to the project, just to give a chance to make sure we're hearing both sides of it. Just name and city, please, then, for the record.
Mary O'Shaughnessy, Cedar Falls, and I am for the project, and on the lines of the club being welcoming, I wanted to share my personal impact statement to give you an idea of my experience with it. So my husband and I moved to Cedar Falls seven and a half years ago from the suburbs of Chicago, and when I moved here, I joined the Rock Center and had friendly acquaintances, but never really connected with anyone outside of going to workout. And I felt like an outsider, and there were no, I, I didn't feel there were any things that were inviting of new people in town, and I became very depressed. And I spent about four years in my basement, working on crafts, and, sorry, I'm shaking, this is important to me to say. And my husband was concerned because I hated living here. And about three years ago, I decided to go to Orchard Hill Park for pickleball newcomer class that was sponsored by the Cedar Falls Pickleball Club. From the time I got on the courts, I had never felt more welcomed. I'm not an athletic person, I'm still not really athletic, but the socialization, it, it's, it, it just was the most beautiful thing I've ever had happen to me. I started continuing to come back. The one thing about the pickleball club is that the members who have been there for, they're experienced, they watch out for the newcomers that are there. So there was always help with an encouragement to keep coming back. Let's see, sorry. I, I'm just going to read this one. So, "I'm proud of the pickleball club members for continually wanting to improve on ways to grow our community by providing classes to teach newcomers, as well as so many of our members donating thousands of dollars in an effort to provide enough courts to support this growing sport. It's much more than just a sport. It's the very definition of what community and fellowship should be. I can say that I have never met anyone on the courts that I didn't like. It is group that always puts the newcomers as the priority to feel welcomed. Building these new courts at Orchard Hill Park opens up the opportunity for others like myself to feel wanted and a sense of family and community. For me, the fact that these courts are located within the community brings an even stronger sense of neighborhood friendship. I think that these courts provide a crucial piece to the puzzle for a healthy and sustainable community and family atmosphere by promoting a sense of unity, fun, and acceptance of all community members." I'm saying that the Cedar Falls Pickleball Club members and non-member players who currently play at Orchard Hill Park, the participant camaraderie is obvious with all those who play, beginners to advanced, young and old, and it's been a lifesaver for more people. for more people than you can imagine. I've lost three siblings to suicide, and the last sibling was, died last summer. If it weren't for this group, the continual work that our club has put into planning and financially supporting the building of these new courts, I doubt that I would be on such a positive and hopeful path. For me, building these new courts at Orchard Hill Park, it's much more than meets the eye. For me, these courts are a lifesaver. It would be devastating to hear if this project didn't move forward at Orchard Hill Park. Thank you for your time in considering the community as a whole. Thank you."
Thank you, Mary. And someone? Well, just since we have both people for and against it, we'll, we'll hold off on the clapping tonight, just because we have for and against, so we don't get into clapping battle.
Kathy Oakland, Cedar Falls, Iowa, Mayor Lattick and City Council members and the rest of you. I have a petition, and I'm going to read it, but I'm going to give it to the mayor?
Yeah, you can say it to the mayor. I'll get it around for you.
The mayor base, the mayor, the petition basically says, "Please postpone the pickleball decision." The petition says, "Urge the Cedar Falls Council to postpone the final vote on the Orchard Hill Park changes. The proposed changes at Orchard Hill Park, including additional pickleball courts, enlarging the parking lot, building a roof over current pickleball courts, and turning the alley into two-way traffic pose significant concerns for our community. The potential noise from twice as many pickleball courts operating from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM is alarming. A formal noise study must be conducted. Furthermore, these changes threaten pedestrian safety. Concerns for encroachment on homeowners' properties and plans for building a rainwater retention pond warrant further impact from those who are affected. The Orchard Hill neighborhood urges the Cedar Falls City Council to delay the final vote on these changes until further studies can be conducted and more community input can be gathered." Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Just name and city, please.
Maureen Henderson, Cedar Falls, 314 Mary Hill Drive. Um, good evening. My husband and I actually live, um, right abutting Orchard Hill Park. Additionally, I'm on the executive committee and board of the Cedar Falls Community Foundation. I'm here to show our support for the park pickleball expansion. As Mary note, uh, mentioned, we've witnessed the impact of pickleball on the use of Orchard Hill Park. I moved here full time in 2021, part-time in 19, and since, since moving here, the growth and the amount of use of the park has been incredible. Uh, when weather permits, Orchard Hill is filled with families playing pickleball, baseball, or picnic game. The parking lot oftentimes is overflowing, especially when there are bad, baseball games. We've also seen families leave the park because there's not enough courts for all to play. The Cedar Falls Pickleball Club has sponsored camps for families and children, beginners to the benefit of Cedar Falls. Residents around Orchard Hill have complained about the noise from the pickleball courts. Based upon my experience in living next to the park, I believe these are overstated and exaggerated. In fact, the noise from the baseball field is louder than the pickleball courts. Through the Cedar Falls Community Foundation, the club successfully raised the funding requested by the city to support the pickleball expansion. There were over 200 donations to the campaign, ranging from $10 to $50,000, supporting the partnership with Cedar Falls in this expansion. The pickleball members contributed in good faith based upon the partnership with the city. A checking amount of $225,000 was presented to the city in September of '23. This expansion has been well thought out, vetted, and was approved multiple times by the Parks and Rec Commission and City Council. Residents that object to the expansion have had the opportunity multiple times to express their issues, and the Parks and Rec Commission has committed to mediating them, as, as, uh, referenced tonight by Mr. Sapi. Um, I would note also that while, um, there was a petition sent around, that petition never came to my house. So I, I, I would have liked to see it since I lived so close to the pickleball courts. On behalf of the Cedar Falls Community Foundation and as a resident who lives next to Orchard Hill Park, I ask the council to approve moving forward with the expansion. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. And then do we have somebody to speak against the project? Thank you. Just name and city, please.
Brenda Bonner, and I'm, live in Cedar Falls. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, for this opportunity to speak and share our thoughts on the proposed pickleball courts for Orchard Hill Park. I am here to talk about noise, pickleball noise. The sound of pickleballs hitting a paddle is approximately 70 to 90 decibels when measuring from about 100 feet away from the court. However, more striking than the decibel level is the frequency. Pickleball has a high pitch which, with a frequency of 1.2 kilohertz. This is similar to the beeping noise of a garbage truck backing up. The garbage truck beeping is supposed to be loud and annoying in order to direct your attention away from the roads. The noise from a pickleball is similar to the, a similar type of constant noise at an annoying frequency. The noise needs to be considered when building pickleball courts. As a neighborhood, we are asking the city council, adhere to the ordinance that's detailed in the city ordinance on noise. Section 15-85 refers to noise limitations by used district. Noise limitations at the lot line of any premises located in the various used districts are as follows. Noise limit at any residence district is 55 decibels. Section 15-75 gives a definition of noise. Noise means unwanted sound, undesired sound, or sound without value. Noise consists of any sound independent of loudness that may produce psychological or physiological damage or interference with the social ends of an individual or group. Such ends to include all of man's activities, including communication, work, rest, recreation, and sleep. When building courts close to the neighborhoods, the city should examine the long-term noise impact. Assessments of sounds affecting surrounding properties needs to be completed by an acoustical engineer and the analysis presented to the public in a detailed report. We are asking to, for the city to do its due diligence in completing a long-term noise impact study before proceeding with further construction in Orchard Hill Park. Next, I would reference section 15-92 in the city code on noise. This refers to issuance of building and occupancy permits for uses potentially creating excessive noise. The procedure set forth in the building code of the city shall be followed before any permit is granted for any non-residential building or structure or change in occupancy thereof, the ultimate use of which may result in the creation of noises which could be in violation of this article. Accordingly, the city should not be issuing permits or beginning work on any building structure where the use may result in a creation of noises over 55 decibels at the lot line of residential properties. Studies need to be done to ensure the noise will not be over the 55 decibels loud. The best solution for pickleball noise is planning ahead. Information, research states that pickleball courts should be built a minimum of 500 feet from any homes which border the courts. This is not the case in the plans for the Orchard Hill Park, so we urge the council to delay the building process until noise issues are addressed. We feel that to mitigate or reduce the risk of litigation for the city of Cedar Falls due to noise, the city may want to consider adding courts on an undeveloped land, as opposed to trying to fit the courts into an existing neighborhood park. For example, land located by the new high school, which is being built. Here, you could build as many courts as you like, have a clubhouse, sufficient parking, et cetera. Any houses built around the courts can then be built utilizing the 50, or, excuse me, the 500-foot rule from the lot line of these properties. A community is made up of individuals, families, businesses, government, landowners, and others who are conducting activities for the livelihood and enjoyment. Noise regulations are in place to find a balance of activities of one group and the need for a peaceful living for others. We are all part of the same community, pickleball members and members of our neighborhood included. We are not against pickleball or anyone who plays it. We are only asking for the city of Cedar Falls to ensure steps are taken to consider all members of the community before moving forward with the expansion at Orchard Hill Park. Thank you for listening and thank you for your service and commitment to all Cedar Falls citizens.
Thank you, Brenda. Someone in support of the project? Just name and city, please.
Yep, Brandon Peterson, Cedar Falls. Good to see a lot of faces around here. Um, and also the work you've been doing, Mike, and your team. Uh, I live at the corner of Valley High in Carlton, so if I could hit a baseball, it'd be just past center field. What a great privilege we have to discuss these things with the betterment of our community. My wife and I thought that moving in 2020 to our current location was a positive for, at the time, our one child. And now with three kids, we just want to be a vibrant park. Um, obviously, you can only have that with involvement, engagement. Good illustration with the kites, we just did that the other day. Um, so we do appreciate the green space there. Um, but it's neat to see the baseball field's full, but the common denominator of what is full is the pickleball courts. I know there's a fair amount of local people here, different age groups, as you can look around throughout our town, but that doesn't scratch the surface from the different folks that I see looking out my window. The club has, I don't know, I've been disconnected with the club just because of life stuffs and the 7:00 AM, 10:00 AM doesn't work well with the work schedule. Um, but I know that's nowhere near the amount of people that are regularly using the facility on a regular basis. And it's not all retired people either. Um, so thankful that the committee, your group, is putting some cost-conscious efforts. I know we can always expect our assessment rate or our tax rates to go up, so it's nice to hear some thought with that. I do understand the concern, uh, with the sound. Um, it's great that we have the, the current wind screens, and it sounds like there's a lot of some financial efforts to improve that. But I will say there was a tennis court there. When I first started coming to this area, because I'm not from here originally, and there was a tennis court. And with a little bit of research, the decibels are 80% of a tennis ball to a pickleball. So it sounds like, uh, the city's willing to put some financial arrangements in place to cut out that remaining 20% uh, and not the expense of the taxpayer. So, or at least it's built into the budget. Um, thankful for the careful consideration of a lot of people, um, especially a lot of people on this side here that I know, um, you guys have put a lot of effort in. Uh, I just get to benefit because I just get to walk there. So selfishly, I love it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Someone in opposition to the project, please.
Hi, I'm Brian Bonner. I was born and raised on Primrose Avenue and live there now. My first concern in the process is safety of the process, uh, of the public. I've spoken to all of the councilors, uh, except one last week, and it's my understanding that you have made an adjustment based on feedback received. And I'm happy, uh, that you decided to put the sidewalk, uh, into place. I think that's really important. Uh, I do want to reiterate that, uh, if the parking lot extension is going in as planned, we really need to put a fence around the small playground that'll be right next to that parking lot for the very smallest children that play, because that playground is for the very smallest kids. My second point is fairness in these pickleball courts. I understand the pickleball club helped fundraise, uh, and work to get the grants for this product, project, and I laud them for that. And I can understand that they want to have, uh, a central social spot for this club, and I understand that. Uh, the plan that you're considering is what's best for the pickleball club. And it's best for the pickleball club that they reserve the courts each morning for the hours that they have. Um, but is it fair to the constituency of Cedar Falls? Is there a better plan? Um, wouldn't it make more sense to spread these courts throughout different parks around the whole city, so people who can't or don't want to drive can still go and enjoy pickleball close to them? Young players that can't drive yet aren't going to bicycle all the way to Orchard Hill Park from North Cedar or from around Holmes Junior High. Wouldn't it make more sense to take the funds that were going to be used to extend the parking lot and instead build more singular courts? And, uh, I've seen a lot of different photos and things about putting a basketball hoop at the side of each court, uh, around those small, singular ones to give even more recreational options for the citizenry. Uh, to me, that would get more of a maximum impact for the money for everyone in Cedar Falls. Um, based on the volume readings that we've kind of taken from the area, um, the numbers, the, the, the decibel numbers right are at the public limit right now. And when the, when the readings were taken, um, the courts were not full. I think six of the, only six of the courts were full. Um, to my knowledge, a real sound study that's required by your ordinance hasn't actually been done yet. And I don't think it had been done for the first set of courts either. Um, at this point in time, based on those points, I'd urge the council not to approve the project at this time, but incorporate these ideas that I've mentioned into the Parks Department's overall report that is due in July. Take the time to do this right. I actually think this plan for Orchard Hill is vastly underestimating the need for pickleball courts. Do the sound study, coordinate with the Parks Department, and come up with a cohesive plan that improves the lives of all citizens in Cedar Falls. Um, pickleball is hugely popular. We just need to take a minute and do it in a thoughtful manner. Thank you for your time and all your hard work. I know you don't get a lot of thanks for the, the job that you guys do. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Brian. Name and city, please.
Hey, my name is Cliff Roy. Uh, I live in Cedar Falls. I'm going to address the noise complaint, although after seeing that video, that might be a moot point. Um, as the general public, we accept that some noise level in everyday life is acceptable. Traffic, lawnmower noise, leaf blowers, garbage trucks, et cetera. There are all kinds of noises out there that have become, that we have become immune to. So what is it that makes some noise acceptable and others not? Is it the noise? Music, for example. Depending on the type of music, sometimes it's good, sometimes it's bad. Same goes for babies crying, ice cream trucks, dogs barking. Good for some people, not good for others. Is it the duration? Again, we listen to music, radio, TV comfortably for long periods of time. But nails on a chalkboard, babies crying, I can do without it. I think we can agree that the time of day also comes into play. Kids shouting at the street at 2:00 in the afternoon, no big deal. Some guy shouting in the street at 2:00 AM gets your attention. We also expect, accept that noise between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM more readily than we do between 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So timing is relevant. The park closes at 10:30. Pickleball ends well before that because we don't play in the dark. So that leaves decibel limits. The city noise ordinance, as had been said, was 55 decibels for residential area, uh, area. I downloaded an app recently that records decibel levels. They got apps for everything. I took some readings out at the pickleball courts the other morning. Seven courts were active, 28 people playing. Standing in the alley between the courts, I was getting readings between 35 and 45 decibels. Right now, it's at 22. By the playground area, it was 30 to 35. And north, on the north side by the fence of the property lines on Primrose, it was 25 to 30. Just for an example, I happened to go out there the other day waiting to play with some friends, and it was just him and I, and I was mentioning this app to him. Nobody was playing. I turned it on and it spiked up to 45. And I looked around and said, what the hell's going on? Guy in the houses to the south about 100 Guy in the houses to the south, about a hundred and fifty yards, was mowing the lawn. My air conditioner has a reading of fifty, and I did some research because I'm putting in a new one, and that's the average decibel reading of your outdoor air conditioner. It sits outside my window. We all have them. So it's not a loudness issue. Different people like different noises. I may not like traffic sounds. Does that mean I get to ban cars on my street? You may not like kids yelling and playing in the yard next door. Do you get to ban children from the neighborhood? When some hear the sound of pickleball being played, a noise that they find very annoying. Me, when I hear it, I get a big smile on my face and try and figure out where I can go join to play. If you let the minority decide that pickleball noise is bad and should be banned, you open the door for someone else to complain that the sound of traffic, or garbage trucks, or kids playing, or any other noise that sounds offensive to them should be banned. So if decibel levels are what mattered in pickleball, it's well within the city limits. Treat pickleball like you would any other noise. Allow it or restrict it, but base it on the decibels. After seeing his, you told us about that. That stuff's pretty incredible. I think it's, I think it's the solution. Thank you for my two cents.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else speak in opposition to the project? One second, I think. Name and city, please.
Galen Hutchins. And some of my concerns have been addressed. I was just looking at, you know, the one thing that I, you know, as a homeowner on Primrose Drive, one of my biggest concerns was just the sound level. And, I mean, some, the, oh, the...
What was that material that you just handed out?
Okay. Is that on right now? Okay. Because that was, that was my question is, because right now, it's like, it is, I mean, right now, it's night, it's not in, you know, right behind us right now, but it is going to be closer the next set of courts that are coming in, so. But with, for the most part, would the, the, would the, would the sound check that you guys were going to be running, are they going to do something? Were they, was it? Excuse me.
No problem at all.
No. My biggest issue was just that you did studies or, you know, if, you know, if, if it was done, I'll just stop. I was going to say.
And then we can make sure and talk to you afterwards, Sue. Someone in support of it. Name and city, please.
Ward Stubbs. And I live in Cedar Falls. I want to thank the mayor and city council, not only for considering this project, but just for your work in general, because I know what it's like. I spent thirty-nine years working for the city. I directed the Parks Recreation Arts and Tourism. Love my job. When I left, the seat was probably still warm. I hope it's not, I hope it's cooled off for you, Chase, because that's where I sat, too. But as a council, I recognize that you folks have to make some tough decisions from time to time. And over the course of my thirty-nine years here, I thought maybe I'd pull up two or three examples to show you that virtually every project that we did with Parks and Recreation had some opposition, and we had to deal with it. And so I have some firsthand knowledge I'd like to share real quickly with you. One was the Falls Aquatic Center. Tremendously controversial, ended up with a four-three vote. And, and I can guarantee you that if that hadn't passed, it would have been a terrible thing for the, for the community. The first year, we had four times as many users as we had at Ray Edwards the previous year. We generated almost three hundred thousand dollars over our operating costs that first year. Tremendously controversial, but fortunately, we got the project. Another one that I would point out is the dog park. Obviously, when they built fifty-eight through the center of town, there were adjacent property owners that weren't very happy with it. But part of it was they closed the UNI golf course, and the remnant land along that corridor was given to the city as green space. I came up with an idea, so let's build a dog park. There wasn't any in the state of Iowa at the time. Had a lot of neighbors that weren't very happy about it. Barking, smell, I don't remember all the things, but we had to fight through that, but we did it, and it's turned out to be a pretty nice facility and well-used. The last one I'd point out is Caidrow Road, the rec trail going from Island Park to Blackhawk Park. I'll never forget the night that Jim Krieg and I, he was the director of developmental services at the time, we met in this room with almost fifty residents from Caidrow Road. And I was wondering if I was going to be alive the next day because we were really not well-accepted that night. Tremendously controversial. It was going to be noise and litter and vandalism. And now, when you see them sell a property on Caidrow Road, what do they say? Oh, we're located next to a beautiful recreation trail. So I point these out to you just because you have to understand that these tough decisions aren't always pleasing to everybody. Not everyone always agrees. And, and the thing about it is there's a demand for parks, and we want to serve the community, but we don't know. I don't know. I never did know what twenty years from now is going to be. No one promised that those parks were going to always be the way they were. I can give you an example, I won't do it tonight because I know it's a long meeting, where we changed the park because of demand and interest. We're trying to serve the community. And I know that the council, through the CIP and the Park and Rec Commission, the staff have done due diligence on this. And I know that it's not easy, and I think you've mitigated some of the concerns that are out there. I think that's important. We've done that in the past as well. I think you'd be making a tremendous mistake to try and spread out eight courts throughout the community. One, it's going to be very expensive. It's hard to maintain them. The other thing is when people go to these courts by having multiple courts, when you show up and there's sixty people there, now where do you go? You don't have to duplicate restrooms and parking and access drives. And I should also point out that this isn't an improvement just for pickleball. This is a park improvement project. And I would strongly encourage you, you know, having a pickleball club come up with forty percent of the funding, that didn't happen very often. Maybe the Hear Center, we, I think we may have generated most of that money. But most facilities aren't. Most facilities are tax-based. And so I would strongly urge you tonight to move ahead with this. I know it's not without some heartburn, and I'd strongly urge you to go ahead and approve this contract. And once again, I thank you for your job. I know it's thankless a lot of the time, but you do a great job, and Cedar Falls is a great community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ward. Name and city, please.
Kim Kisher Larson, Cedar Falls. I'll go ahead and say I'm right next to the park and the alleyway, and that will impact us greatly. I want to start by, first of all, thanking each of you for your service to us as the citizens of this wonderful city. We're very proud to live in Cedar Falls, and we're very grateful for all of your service. Mayor Laudek, all of the council members, and the directors and administrators. Without you, we wouldn't have the success we have in this city. People love coming here. I know your job isn't always easy, trying to weigh all the perspectives when rendering a decision. There are decisions that come with ease, with beneficial outcomes for most of your constituents. There are others that may weigh very heavily, knowing the lives of people are impacted. I approach you this evening to ask that you delay your final vote on the resolution to let the bid for construction on Orchard Hill Park until we have seen the studies about the noise levels, the additional pickleball, pickleball courts will cause, and the Parks and Recreation Department elicit input from the neighborhood whose homes abut the park. The pickleball club has touted a partnership they have with the City Parks Department in the planning that has occurred, has been occurring since as far back as 2018. We homeowners were not made aware of plans until an informational meeting on May twelfth, 2023. This plan was presented for more pickleball courts and building a larger shelter. At that time, nothing was said about adding parking space, a stormwater overflow drainage pond, or widening the alley that leads into the park. We have now learned that there will be sidewalk added in addition to widening the alley. And there was consultation about possibly adding a roof over the existing courts for shade. I do believe that has been dropped, but I am concerned that we have not seen a complete plan with supporting documentation to justify making the park into a pickleball destination. Was an acoustical engineer hired to do a professional study on the noise impact? Has a traffic study been conducted to determine whether the two-way traffic flow will be safe and allow for pedestrian bicycle traffic? Widening the alley will, in effect, take all of the easement and possibly more from the two properties on either side of the alley, bringing the traffic just feet from our homes. Other than the informational meeting notice in May of 2023, and the notice of hearing at the city council meeting on April fifteenth, 2024, we have not been informed about progress and proposed changes or additional plans that have been added that were not presented at that meeting last year. People are questioning, understandably so, why now? As the work of the club and the city are so close to getting the proper, project finalized and completed this summer, why have we suddenly mobilized and expressed concerns about the proposed plans and the subsequent impact on us as homeowners? It is because we have not been included in any phase of the planning process except for those two events. The original plan was presented as a quote "done deal" and that quote, "While it's hard to accept change, you'll like what's being done." The club has shared their best intentions of being good neighbors, and I believe that they do want to be good neighbors. But not once has any of us had contact or been, or asking for our input to come to a mutually amenable solution for all. I voiced my concerns about making changes that affect our quality of life and the value of our property. It is about having the courtesy, respect, and moreover, the obligation to elicit input from the homeowners in the surrounding neighborhood. The changes proposed for Orchard Hill Park benefit a small group of well-funded enthusiasts and loses its appeal to the general population. Having the basketball courts and tennis courts removed, I can't tell you how often we see teens come to the park looking to play basketball, only to find it's no longer there. There were many youths that took tennis lessons at this park, but that isn't an option now either. Earlier this spring, I looked out my kitchen window and truly enjoyed seeing the hub of activity that is a daily occurrence at Orchard Hill Park. That warm evening, I saw a young family sitting on a blanket spread out beneath a beautiful mature tree, enjoying the shade. As a mother and baby played, the older children went to entertain themselves on the playground equipment. I was alarmed when I saw that tree was cut down the very next day. Inquiring why it was taken down, I learned it was made, it was taken down to make way for an expanded parking lot. I hold no animus towards the pickleball club. I applaud their efforts to make improvements to the park, and I respect and am envious of their zeal in fundraising. Good job! I love, I would love to learn to play pickleball. I have family members who do and enjoy it immensely. I just have deep concerns about the manner in which this has all transpired, and the impact of the noise, property values, and especially safety for all park patrons. The legacy of this family-oriented park was left to us all, those who live nearby and those who use the park daily. The park has always catered to a wide variety of patrons of varying ages. We need to maintain that promise of access and entertainment for all who come to use the park. We do not own the park, but we must be good stewards of the park to leave our grandchildren and future generations. I thank you all for your time and consideration this evening and urge you to delay the vote until further studies can be conducted, as my neighbors have suggested. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Now, in support of the project. Name and city, please.
Eagle Patterson. Not a big fan of socializing, speaking, so here we go. I'm an eighteen-year-old senior in high school, about to go off to college. Initially, lived out of Colorado. Moving from Colorado to Cedar Falls, a little different. Initially started playing pickleball, I was thirteen years old. One day, I decided to go up to baseball diamond and see if anyone's playing. Instead, I discovered pickleball. There was a group of four playing and introduced it to me and my younger brother. After that day, I walked over to the courts almost every day. It was for me, it was a hundred percent better than staying home, playing video games, or even sleeping in. Yeah, again, I'm not the average teenage boy back then, still ain't. I was welcome, encouraged to play. I was able to connect with a lot of people of different generations who now have become mentors and friends. Honestly, I have more close, meaningful friendships from pickleball than I do with kids my own age. Pickleball courts have been healthy, safe place for me to spend time. I can't begin to estimate how many hours I spent playing pickleball at those courts over the past five years. It's a very important part of my life. I am encouraged that more younger people are now starting to play. I hope we can provide the needed court space for young people, families, and all generations to enjoy it. Pickleball has allowed me to excel at sports without the high cost of travel teams, professional coaches, or private lessons. Sometimes kids, like myself, don't have the opportunities to participate simply because of the cost. Pickleball is a low and low cost and available to anyone who wants to show up to the courts and play like I did. Next fall, I plan to attend Drew University in Springfield, Missouri. They are the first college to offer a pickleball program, and I've received a pickleball scholarship. I'm thankful that the city has provided the opportunity to play pickleball, and I'm also thankful that the community has people who care about others and will willing to let a thirteen-year-old onto the court and invest their time and energy into me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Anyone in opposition to the project? Just name and city, please.
Lori Niebro, Cedar Falls. First of all, this group is not against pickleball. I feel like the attitude is that we just hate pickleball, we hate people. That is not the case. We're all for pickleball in this city. We all hope that it, you know, grows and is somewhere, but we just don't feel like this is the correct place for it. We're just looking to maintain the quality of life that should be enjoyed by everybody in Cedar Falls. We don't believe that citizens of this city should have to sacrifice the quality of their lives so one group of people can have what they want and where they want it. Also, I want to speak about the noise with the addition of eight for sixteen total pickleball courts at Orchard Hill Park. I don't think that due diligence was done because I think there would have been a noise study. But there was no noise study, which seems kind of weird because the big thing with pickleball is noise. But I think that everybody knows why there was no noise study, and that was probably because, you know, it's noisy. I was told by Mr. Sapi, I'm sorry, I don't know how to say your last name, but that it is going to be noisy, and everybody acknowledges that it is a noise issue. Seems like the, also, it seems like traffic is an issue. Seems to me like the city would be kind of interested to know what additional traffic would do to not only the park and the parking lot, but streets that are coming into the park, like McLean. park, like McLean Drive and Primrose Drive. So we just feel like we need to slow things down and maybe look at these things. So I feel like the city is moving forward with these plans and just hoping that it works out okay, hoping that the noise isn't too much. And I think there's an obligation by the city to be good stewards with their taxpayer money, help everybody, try to help everybody in the city and not really be to the detriment of several people who live around this park. Ruining the quality of life for a number of residents is not good use of taxpayer money. Last time we were here, some people were saying that we were the "not in my backyard" group, which, to me, "not in my backyard" applies to things that are infrastructure. For instance, you know, windmills, things like that, that are going to be of good to everybody, but they just don't want it in their city or their neighborhood. The pickleball courts aren't something that everybody will use. I think somebody had said that there's about four hundred members of the pickleball court, which is about one percent of the city population. The new courts will literally be in my backyard. I mean, it's right there. It's less than a hundred and fifty feet from my house. So, sorry, I lost my place. Just, I feel like the pickleball club and the city council are just taking so much away from us, and we've lived in this nice quiet park forever. I grew up in the house that I live in and moved away and I came back, everything was the same, until just recently. It's gonna make the property value goes, go down and probably make the entire neighborhood undesirable, except to people who like to play pickleball and have that noise in their backyard. I just feel like it's kind of this thing where we've got a private entity giving the city money for something that seems to be giving them a stronger voice. So I don't know if that's really a good way to do this. The money that the pickleball club has contributed, I think, has given them a sense of ownership of the park, and I feel like they think we're infringing on their rights to use Orchard Hill Park in the way that they want to. Also have a question about letting this, the private club part of it, where, you know, they've got it reserved for themselves. They're also charging money for people to be in the pickleball club, so essentially you can't, unless you pay your dues, your twenty-five dollars a year or something small, but people are essentially having to pay to play on the pickleball court. The city's not getting that money, right? The pickleball club is getting that money. So that, to me, just seems kind of not right.
About thirty seconds.
Oh, sorry. I just want to say, just that they're, these courts are too close to my house. We need to have some studies done, we need to back off a little bit and move forward when people really understand what's going on, because I'd hate to see all this money to go, you know, use all the money and then have it have to be shut down because of noise issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. And in support of the project, just name and city, please.
My name is Jeanette Marsh, and all I can say is, wow, I can't believe all that I'm hearing. I'd like to say that after I retired from U N I in '02, I used to go to Florida and play pickleball. When I came back after a few years, I had a dream, and my dream was that I could find three people to play pickleball with me, and that dream has really come true. I put an ad in the paper to try to get some people to play pickleball, and Mark and his church group showed up, and we went down to those courts there at Orchard Hill, and I would draw with chalk, I would draw pickleball courts so that we could play pickleball. And we did that for a couple of years, and while I was gone, this group here behind me, they're the ones that, that got the, the courts that we have now. They're the ones that got the courts that we're about to get. And I say the ones that we're about to get because I believe in my heart that that's what's really gonna happen. If I had to worry about decimals, I would want somebody to come down by my house. I live on 12th Street. That's a raceway, and they, and they've got very loud cars, motorcycles, everything else. If we, if we stall on this, these people have been working on this for a long time. They put a lot of effort into it, and, and we've got all these same problems, and it sounds to me like they've been taken care of. We've taken care of the, the noise. Think of all the things that we've been talking about that we're gonna do for the noise. Think of what they've done to make sure that the water runoff is okay. Think of all the things that they've thought about. What do you mean that we're gonna have problems? It's been thought about, and if, if you leave it go, you know what? The next time, you say, okay, leave it go, the next time, somebody's gonna come up with something else. You know what? It'll just, it'll just drag on and drag on. It's time to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. And someone in opposition. Name and city, please.
Shelley Wessels, Cedar Falls. I've lived in Cedar Falls my entire life. Seventeen years ago, we moved to Orchard Drive, and we loved taking our family walks in the neighborhood park just around the corner from our house. We'd walk, and the kids would ride their bikes down Orchard, onto McLean, and stop and say a friendly hello to Kevin Eubin along the way. I knew Kevin because he was my junior high youth leader at Orchard Hill Church when I was growing up, where we still continue to attend today. I loved knowing people in this area who made the neighborhood so friendly. We'd stop in the alleyway that entered the park and talk to him and his wife Sherry over the fence as the girls rode ahead into the parking lot with their bikes with training wheels, practicing to get a little bit better and knowing that this was a safe place for them to gain some independence as they could ride a little further on without us. Our kids eventually started school at Orchard Hill Elementary. Again, they would walk to and from school every day. They'd go down Orchard and then McLean, they'd look both ways before they'd cross the alleyway that led into the park and head up the sidewalk to round. We've walked this route thousands of times, and our memories of our entire chapter of raising kids reside in this family-friendly neighborhood, which we are here to talk about today. One day, we drove down Mary Hill Drive and noticed a for-sale sign in the house, in a house that backed right up to Orchard Hill Park. I was pregnant with our third and knew that we would need additional, an additional bedroom soon, so we went to the open house, and I fell in love with the quiet park-like backyard and with the big, beautiful arched window on the backside that looked out over the grassy ballfields. The best part of the house was definitely on the backside overlooking the park. It had been built that way to focus on what was the best, the grassy views of a neighborhood park with tennis courts, a basketball court, playground, and practice baseball field, something for everyone. However, it was out of our price range, so we waited and we spent a few months discerning, and eventually we wrote the owners a letter explaining that we were gonna write them a lower-than-asking price offer, but that we had all intentions of staying in our house forever, and we wanted to put roots down just as they had. So they accepted our offer, and we moved in and began the process of updating the whole house. We, that summer, we signed our two kids up for the tennis lessons. Over the summer, it was an awesome program. Neighbor kids all rode their bikes from all over, and there was a big, beautiful shade tree, and parents would all come and set up lawn chairs and lay out blankets for their younger kids to eat snacks and play around on and get to know each other better under the tree while the kids played tennis. These are some of my best memories in my life. We loved living, we have loved living behind the park. We love our patio that overlooks the ballfield and getting to watch practices take place there. We've loved the gentle sounds of people playing tennis and laughing together. We've loved watching people come use the open field to play catch with their dog and let little kids learning to walk, learning to walk, having a green, grassy place to do so. It's a great place to fly kites and to have a quiet place to just relax in serenity over a lunch break. We've loved all these things, and we've never complained about anything in our seventeen years of living there and being neighbors of the park. Last February, I looked out my picture window to see the concrete of the tennis courts being chopped up and the fencing being ripped out of the ground. I immediately went to work trying to figure out what was going on. Called the Parks Department and was told that the tennis court was being removed and more pickleball courts were going to be built in its place. No. I immediately knew this was not good. There was already existing courts built, and we already knew how much different the sound of pickleball was from tennis. We knew how many more people were on a court, a pickleball court versus tennis, and how much more loud the sounds of multiple pickleballs were. I found out there was a Parks and Recs meeting that night and showed up to that meeting to question why our neighborhood hadn't been informed of the possibility of this huge change before it was already being done.
It's one minute chilly.
So, let's see. So, which they would eventually call a complex or a destination. I just don't feel that this number of people and courts should be in this small neighborhood There is a song, "Big Yellow Taxi," the lyrics say. Don't it always seem to go that you don't know what you've got till it's gone? They paved paradise and they put up a parking lot. Can't help it that I, that resonates with me. Last week, we received a letter in the mail saying that they were gonna put in a hundred and eight parking spots. That seems like a crazy amount to me. That's more than Orchard Hill Elementary School has. I'd like to see them maybe use the existing parking lot and work with the school. And looking, look further into placing the second one on the south side of the existing one so that none of the courts back up as close as they do to people's property lines. And one other thing, just if you go stand where the bathrooms are currently on a beautiful day and listen, that's exactly how far my patio sits from the new courts, and so that can show you exactly as it is right now what it sounds like, both from the balls and, and people's sound. So I'm asking you to delay as revisions are looked into further. Thanks.
Thank you, Shelley. And someone in support of the project. Name and city, please.
David Maxon II, and from Cedar Falls. I'm a couple of minutes away from Orchard Hill, and I'm happy to be part of this pickleball club. I think I'm still part of it, I haven't paid my dues yet, but... So, I think somebody said earlier, you know, you gotta pay to, to play, show up. I don't have anything written down, but I just wanted, wanted to address the location. I think that it's a really good location to have more courts because I've been looking around, trying to find places to play in tournaments, and it seems like Omaha is probably the closest or somewhere in Minnesota. So, having so many courts in, in a location like that could bring more people to our town, most Cedar Falls, and bring more, more business to our town. I think if we had a, you know, set up tournaments in the future, I think that that would be a good idea. So, I just wanted to address the location. I think it's a, a good idea to have more courts. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And anyone in opposition to the project? Just name and city, please.
Kevin Eubin, Cedar Falls. Thank you to the mayor and the council. People have come up here and said they're nervous. Talk about nervous. If I get through this, I'll be doing good. So, my, my wife Sherry and I, we live right there on the, on the alleyway going into the park. You know, our, our main concern, not the pickleball, don't have any concerns with the pickleball, we don't, we don't have anything to do with the club. But our concern is the traffic mainly coming in and out of the park. You know, the, the flow of traffic, we've lived there twenty-seven years, so we've watched the park forever. We've seen everything going through there as far as tennis, basketball, baseball. Soccer games used to be played back there, lots of soccer games before they put the soccer complex in. And so, since 2018, when we put the, the pickleball courts in, yes, that did increase the traffic quite a bit, but my concerns are not necessarily the existing pickleball courts, it's adding another set of pickleball courts that is going to double the amount of traffic coming in and out of that park. Whether we increase the driveway or not, that's not gonna cut down the amount of traffic that we're gonna double. So, you've got a lot of traffic coming in and out of there. Now, we're talking about doing tournaments and things, you know, that's more traffic coming in and out of there. This is a narrow little area. I don't know if you're familiar with the park, you guys are all familiar with the park, you've been there, but when you come in there, I mean, you're, you're literally, from my patio where I sit, I'm eight feet away from the traffic going in. You know, you're gonna bring people in closer because we're gonna widen that. You know, this is six feet. You're gonna be closer than this to me sitting on my patio, the cars going by. It's a little bit of a concern, not only that they're gonna be close, but we've lost quite a bit of privacy. So our fence, we got a nice fence built, but since the traffic has increased, we've noticed a lot of eyeballs looking into our backyard. You can look right into our back patio, you can look into our house, where we sit and eat, you know, that's a concern, so we're gonna have to do something different with a fence. I don't know if that's our cost, you know. I don't know if anybody's ever sat down and listened to how, how noisy traffic is six feet away from you as they're coming in and out of there, but it's loud, cars coming in and out of there. I did, I, I didn't do an app, I actually bought a legit decibel meter, and I sat down in my patio chair as cars go by. There wasn't, there was one car out of all of them that went through that was below fifty-five decibels. Most of them were sixty-five, seventy-five. A couple of them coming down the street were seventy, you know, that, a lot of cars. So, that hasn't been addressed. I mean, that's a concern for me personally, because that's where, you know, that's where we hang out in the backyard. So, also, if we increase the traffic, and I know the sidewalk has now been discussed, and that's great because I've seen so many cars that have had to stop for kids on bicycles and things coming in and out of the park, huge safety concern. That's one thing I don't think we can overlook, right? So, if we can put the sidewalk in now, it's gonna help. Is it gonna be ADA compliant with, for the, for the wheelchair access, for the, for the little house that's around the corner from us? They've got some special needs that they bring in, in wheelchairs to that park pretty much daily during the summer. You know, just make sure that they can get in and out of, out of the park safely, that would be great. You know, so these are things that concern me. I knew I was gonna forget. I wrote all this, all this stuff down to talk about, but pretty much everybody's covered this stuff, so I don't wanna repeat things that everybody's already talked about, so. So I thought I'd just talk about what's gonna affect us necessarily, you know. Could it affect the price of our house someday? Who, who knows? Yeah, maybe, maybe not, I don't know. But that is a concern, so. And I'm still nervous, so, sorry if I'm nervous. And also with that, with that park, the driveway coming into the park, you know, it's gonna run right next to our house, it's actually gonna go beyond our house, run right along Marine and Johns, I mean, within, I don't even know, pretty close. You know, so there's a concern there for what happens if somebody gets a little bit, you know, off to the side, damages the property, you know, that's a concern, so. Anyway, I guess that's all I had. Thank you, guys, I know we've all talked. You guys have been great. I, I'm pretty impressed, actually, so. Thank you for listening, I felt like we were heard, and I'm just, let's keep up the good work, but I think we need to find, we need to have more discussion. I think that's, that's what the, the end should be, so, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone for the project?
Mr. Mayor, this is, Mr. Mayor, this is Gil. I'm gonna try to get jump on a Wi-Fi connection, but I may lose you here. I am still concerned about some unanswered questions that I have and others have on both sides, and would look for a delay.
Okay. Feel free to text me if you're having any issues, too. I think so. Take it away. Name and city, please.
My name is Charlie Blair-Brocker, Cedar Falls. I echo the appreciation for the work you're doing and also for the citizens who came to speak tonight. Appreciate the discourse. I'm a happy but mediocre pickleball player and a proud former president of the Cedar Falls Pickleball Club. Almost ten years ago, when the need for new courts first became apparent, the club liked the idea of working in cooperation with the city. We liked the idea of having the pickleball facilities be open to the public. It fits our club's mission to promote health... It fits our club's mission to promote health, well-being, community through pickleball. At Orchard Hill, we've run youth camps, filled monthly clinics for newcomers, and reserved a court to support beginning members and visitors on weekday mornings. Since before the first courts opened at Orchard Hill, we have done everything the city asked and more. On the current courts, we put up and take down nets each year to increase their lifespan. We also put up and take down wind screens and repair them every time we get a strong wind. We clean the courts and have repaired cracks in the court's surface. We put soap in the bathrooms. We pick up litter. We plant trees. We report vandalism and our presence helps deter it. These efforts resulted in the city and CFU Quality of Life Partnership Award in 19, sorry, 2017, which we very much appreciate. For the new proposal, we met with the city early on to map out a plan and have continued to meet regularly to fine tune and improve the plan. We sought and received the unanimous endorsement of the Parks and Rec Commission. We committed to raise funds because we were told contributed dollars would help move us up on the city's CIP. We were with P and R when neighbors were invited to, to voice their concerns and have worked with the city to address those concerns. We were here in council chamber every time the issue was considered by you and were cheered and encouraged by your support when no major problems with the plan were identified. Then we raised money, lots of money. We've already paid the city almost a quarter million dollars raised from hundreds of our members and granting agencies. Private money to improve a public city park. Money that was donated and then managed by the Cedar Falls Community Foundation with the express understanding it would be used for the approved Orchard Hill Expansion Plan. In short, we have dotted i's and crossed t's until our hands cramped up. Yet now, after you accept the money pledged in good faith, after you already started the project by building a brand-new, beautiful picnic shelter, after you invited and received bids for court construction, and only months before the city's timeline says the new courts will be finished and open for play at Orchard Hill, some of you are considering, considering pulling the rug out. Now, it's like we carefully planned, researched, negotiated, and paid to buy a particular house this summer, only to be told that we must instead accept a different house that we know nothing about at some indefinite future time. Please do not do this. Hundreds of people are counting on your promised support tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. Those that don't know, Charlie was my AP psych teacher, so it feels we were calling you Charlie. Thank you, Mr. Blair-Broker.
Same here, so thank you.
All right. Anyone else for opposition to the project? All right, seeing none, we'll open it back to anyone for the project and support. Name and city, please.
Steve Sullivan, Cedar Falls. I just live, oh, probably southwest of the courts on Mary Hill in Carlton there. My wife and I definitely want this to go forward, okay? Yeah, I'm a pickleball player. I'm a tennis player. I'm everything, okay? I'm into sports. It would be nice to have them all, all the courts in one area there, like a pickleball hub where everybody would know where to go to play, okay? But I do have one concern here. I'm confused here. Two weeks ago, you voted this six to one to move forward with taking bids. Nothing has changed here. It was about noise and location back then, and you're still now trying to bring it up again. This was all voted on, six to one. What are you doing here? We flip-flopping? Come on, come on. I watched it on TV two weeks ago. Noise, location, okay? You went ahead anyway, six to one, to move forward, okay? So I don't understand. I'm confused. I really am. All right, moving on there. So having living next to two parks in my life, East Park in Mason City and a park in Charles City, big parks, big parks, okay? Lots of activity going on, lots of activity. Moving here, this park isn't living up to its potential, okay? You have so much ground there to work with. You have baseball field there. We want to put pickleball courts there. We want to bring energy. We want to bring life to that park, okay? Tennis is kind of a dying sport. That's why a lot of people are going to pickleball courts now. And in fact, Mason City has now taken out all of their tennis courts and are putting in all pickleball courts, okay? And they are, they have moved ahead. Their city council and their park and rec department are elated that they're doing this. I used to live 20 feet from the tennis courts in Mason City. I could literally walk out my back door, 10 seconds I'm at the courts. Was it loud? Yes. People were using the bang board to bang tennis balls on to get practice with from eight in the morning to 10, 10:30 at night. They were playing tennis banging on the bang board. So you talk about noise? Yeah. But one thing you forget about noise is, once you've lived there for a while, it becomes like white noise. You know it exists, okay? You know it exists, but it's not, you just, you just live with it. You don't even know it. Until it's gone and you're like, whoa, I can't go to sleep now because I'm used to hearing that, you know? I lived next to a cement plant where I heard the kilns going all night long, okay? Loud, louder than pickleball, okay? By far, okay? When they closed down the cement plants in Mason City, I had troubles going to sleep because I was so used to hearing that. White noise, okay? White noise. You'll get used to it, people. You will. Another thing here, too, we want to bring people to the parks, right? We want them to feel welcome there, okay? So public parks, aren't they for to bring people to? You know, families. That's where people meet friends. That's where you have picnics. Every park I've lived next to had all this here, plus it had tennis courts, baseball diamonds, concert halls there. Every park I lived next to had that, okay? We don't have that here. This is totally different for me. I'm not used to seeing this. I'm used to seeing a lively park, a lively park, full of energy, full of happiness, full of joy. Don't got that here. And that's what we're trying to do here. We're trying to incorporate more people to come to these courts, learn the sport of pickleball, get used to this pickleball, this area of the park and rejuvenate it, bring it life. So yes, I propose that you keep moving forward with this. You've already voted six to one. I'm not understanding here to move forward with this. There's nothing new. Remember, there's nothing new on here. It's all about noise and location before, and yet you still voted. Why didn't you table it then? I don't get it. I'm lost. So if you can explain that to us, that would be great. But thank you for your time. I say we move forward with this. Let's bring joy and happiness to this park. Let's rejuvenate it. Let's bring it to life again. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other speakers? Name and city, please.
My name is Kent Radiken from Cedar Falls. My wife and I moved here two years ago from Whidbee Island, north of Seattle, to be with my 94-year-old dad, who was a professor here at UNI. We have had pickleball out there for 60 years, and we watched this process happen in Mount Vernon and Bellingham and Everett, and they all started in the parks, all these pickleball courts. And they went through these problems there, too, and they solved them. You know, they had more years than, than we have here, but they did solve the noise. That's amazing, Mike. And the landscaping and the neighborhoods thought that they would lose value, but they actually increased in value. I, I wanted to say that I've watched this happen here since we moved here. My wife got picked up like Mary. She didn't know anybody and they kind of took her in and, and she had a community, which is a wonderful community, the pickleball community. But what I think's at issue here is the safety and the completion of this project and is it the right thing to do or not? And I believe it's the right thing to do because I think it would be a signature gem park with increased safety, water drainage. I think everything in that park would improve if you finished this project, everything for everybody. And I do think that it would be, I do think it'll bring more dynamic vitality to the park. I think there will be more noise and more traffic, but I think over the next five years or so, it will all be taken care of through the sound barriers and the landscaping and the getting used to it. I think that that entryway needs to be improved, and I think that sidewalk needs to be there. And I think the safety of everyone will be helped if all these issues were, were brought to completion rather than just drop it. Because I think if you drop it, there's still going to be a ton of people going to that park, and I think it'll, you'll lack the money and the effort and the entire community's involvement in bringing it to a, to a kind of a beautiful conclusion. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. Any other speakers this evening? You only get one chance, so you can't come back up. Name and city, please.
Sarah Jansen, Cedar Falls. I just want to talk about the location quickly. During COVID, the height of COVID in 2020, a friend of mine and I wanted to get outside and do something. So we decided that we were going to walk the trails in Cedar Falls, but we got tired of that very quickly. So then we decided we were going to walk the city streets of Cedar Falls. 350-plus miles, we did. I walked past 28 parks in Cedar Falls that are neighbor parks. They're very small parks, all surrounded by homes, large enough to have play equipment that that's about it. The other parks that we have in Cedar Falls, Washington Park is in a flood zone. Island Park, Tourist Park is in a flood zone. Those are large enough to expand, but they flood. Orchard Hill is a perfect location. It's large enough to expand for other things. We've already got a wonderful new shelter house there, bathrooms that have been improved. So I'm just saying that you've talked about locations and moving it to other places, but because of landlocked neighborhoods that we have, we really don't have a lot of locations to move and do much of other activities for parks either, so I'll come in.
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else for public comments? I've got a few more work on it.
Hi, I am Cindy Wagner, Cedar Falls. I have a large, long history of being a fitness instructor for well over 30 years in this area, presently been at the Rec Center for over 20. So I have seen a lot of phases of things come and go through that time, from, I was just telling somebody, the trampoline classes, I taught those, step classes, all those things. I was introduced to pickleball in February of 19, all right before, or 2020, right before everything just shut down. And even in that short period of time, I found a community, a community of love. And I am very much a social person, and having the pickleball club has taken the place of other things that I've had in my past. I was a teacher for 33 years, so I have now a new family, a family that, it isn't just pickleball. It is, we go places together. We kayak together. We go so many things beyond that place. And the community that pickleball brings, people come to this area to play pickleball because they've heard great things about our community, they've heard great things about our pickleball club, they've heard great things about everything that we have to offer here. And we have an opportunity right now to add eight more courts to a fabulous location. I live a hop, skip and jump. I can see from my house the restroom of the inclusive park. If you've not been there during primetime, holy schmoly. It is a hopping place. There is cars all over. And thank you to the city, the Parks Department. They have made improvements along that time to make it safer. And I see that with this situation, too, is there's going to be growing pains. There just are going to be. But we have an opportunity to expand this pickleball facility for more people to come to, to more people to enjoy, from toddlers to Sally, 80, 83 years old, okay? As a fitness instructor, I do not see a place anywhere around here that goes that gamut of ages, abilities, interests, love and laughing. We laugh every day to the point that you've got tears coming down your face, like I have right now for another reason. So really, please consider, please vote yes. If we continue to drag this out, the reputation of the city and other things will be at risk, not to mention if it gets dragged out more. Conclusion, pretty much is going to be the same, but it may cost another $50,000 to $100,000. And the club has raised hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars towards a fantastic idea. So please, say yes tonight. Don't drag it out any further. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Anyone else? Name and city, please.
So I wasn't going to talk, but I'm Mary Dickens. I'm from Cedar Falls, retired PE teacher. I'm just going to talk about yesterday. Yesterday, we went out, a group of ladies went out to play. We call it dinking. It's something you learn to dink your pickleball. So the courts were pretty full, and there were two groups from out of town. They got on the Pickle Play app that you can get on. It shows you in every city in, all over the country where the pickleball apps are, or the pickleball places to play. They were from Marshalltown and Denver. They were there playing. The amount of people coming into our community is huge with this pickleball. It's, it's spreading like wildfire, and we need to, we need to just do it. Just do it. That's it.
Thank you, Mary. Name and city, please.
My name is Mark Rhodes, Pleasant Drive, Cedar Falls. At the last council meeting, I was asked about grants and I gave wrong information. I emailed everybody. I hope they got it, but I just wanted to make sure in case somebody did not read it that if the project does not move forward, we risk the chance of losing the three grants that we got for $52,500. I think it's important that we continue this project to the end. I feel bad if we have people playing pickleball at 11 o'clock at night in a city park. That shouldn't happen, and they obviously aren't following what guidelines the city has. We're trying to be the best neighbors we can. We're, I think Mike has addressed a lot of the issues that the neighbors have, and it's not a, a final answer solution. I'm sure there'll be things that we can change and work on in the future. I'd just like to, hope you'd approve this and pass it along so we can get this going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
I'm Sheri Huben. I'm from Cedar Falls. I am totally glad you said that. I am going to plead to the pickleball people. Please keep in mind the city streets. I would like to request a stop sign at McLean, please. My granddaughters play in the front driveway. I see people go tearing up and down McLean, up the alley. It's not acceptable. Please, talk to your pickleball people. Slow down. I've gotten dirty looks. I've gotten car honks. I've gotten dirty looks. I've gotten car honks from people. I'm trying to get out of my driveway to go to work at 6:45 in the morning. It's not acceptable. I, we need a resolution for safety right there with a stop sign at McLean. Thank you.
Thank Sheri. Anyone else for public comment? Give a second in case anybody's in the waiting room. All right, seeing no more for public comment. Quick check with council, restroom, anybody, everyone doing okay?
Yeah.
Nobody likes to have a discussion when you're sitting there trying to have an accident, not have an accident. All right, so we will, what was that?
Check on Gil.
Yeah, I think Gil had to drop off. Did he ever come back on? He did not text me, so. But he did, I know I've talked to them about some of his concerns, so. All right, so we will now move this over to council discussion and open it up for whoever would like to start. I will just want to say quick, thank you to everyone for all the time. You know, we've all been here for quite a bit. I know this isn't an easy conversation. Many of us do live in these neighborhoods, and it does have an impact, and a lot of us put a lot of time and effort into this. I know Kathy, you apologized for saying you'd be here, but this is the point to public comment is to have these discussions. So just thank you, everyone, for being willing to come and talk about it. So council, any discussion, comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor. I'll be the nervous one to start it, since I was the nay vote. I just wanted to say to all that did speak, I mean, it is a nerve-wracking thing to come and speak at council. I applaud you. I am certain, even by just making eye contact, there are folks in the audience that have something to say and didn't. I totally get that. Probably some for and some against. I've spent significant amount of time doing due diligence. As you, as you've heard tonight, the reason that I voted no last time was because I wanted us to hold off and do some more studies. Because we couldn't postpone it, I went ahead and said no to that juncture to approve the estimate. Tonight, we're here talking about the estimates that we, the bids that we got back. The bid actually came in at like three hundred and ninety, or three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for the parking lot and construction and some others that obviously Mr. Sapi already showed you. So it's already a hundred grand less than what I voted no to last meeting. That's worth noting. But, you know, to the neighbors in my area, you know, Kim, sorry, Keith couldn't be here as well, Kevin, Sheri, Kathy, appreciate you guys being here, Linda as well. I've heard the concerns there, and I also hear Mr. Stubbs and his experienced perspective that this might be the right thing to do for the community. I've heard significant outpouring of support from not only the club, but also neighbors within my ward and around town. I'm really torn. I'm going to pull one from Councilmember Emeritus Harding's playbook and say, I can see both sides here. I mean, I really do understand the argumentation from both sides. I do just want to thank those that did speak again, and appreciate you guys dialoguing with me. I've had, you know, I don't know if it's been over a hundred, but plenty and enjoyable conversations and emails. The civic discourse in this entire process is commendable. So I thank you for your contributions. I wish we had this kind of engagement on most everything that we talk about as a city, quite frankly. I don't want them to all go till nine forty PM, and I'm sure not many of you do either. But this has been a really good conversation, and we're not done talking about it. I have plenty more things that I've been thinking all night and just decided not to make notes. So I'm going to go ahead and yield the floor to others that might have comment, but I thank you for being engaged in this conversation thus far.
Mr. Mayor.
What's the number, Lada?
You know, it's, it's nice to put some names and faces together. I've heard from a lot of this room. I think darn near all of you, in one way, shape, or form. And I would echo what Councilman Ganfield just said. Not one of those conversations, whether you were adamantly for or against this project, were in any way confrontational, adversarial. And that, that's a pretty cool thing about this city, isn't it? Dustin's right. It's, it's a darned if you do and darned if you don't, because I do see both sides of this coin. I really do. It's pretty impressive to me that you all took the time to come here tonight, that you took the time to reach out to, I'm quite certain, all of us, in one way, shape, or form. And I hope that you feel that you were responded to, because that was one thing I heard well before I took office, was that we had a council that didn't always feel, you didn't, the citizens didn't always feel as though they were heard. So whether this vote goes the way you hope it does or doesn't, I do hope that you feel as though that this body listened to you. And even if we don't see the agreement here, I think we're all on the same page, that there's, there's efforts that need to be made here so that some of these concerns can be mitigated. Without putting Mike on the spot, as Dustin said, this just did come in at a hundred thousand less roughly than what we were anticipating. So I guess I would really hope that if this does move forward, that we look at that hundred thousand that we were already anticipating spending to try to maybe more aggressively or progressively get towards some of those mitigation efforts to make sure that some of these concerns are addressed in short order. So I'll yield back. Thanks.
And Councilmember Lada? Councilmember Cruz?
Sure. I'll echo, I'll echo what everybody said. Fantastic group. I've talked to many on the phone, in person, and so on and so on. I wanted to answer one question to the gentleman. I think he's out in the lobby now. Three weeks ago, at our last council meeting, that was the first public hearing that it was presented to us. There might have been opportunities to be invited out to see this project, but I never received one. So as far as I know, to bring it to council is the first public hearing, and that's part of the process, even though whatever happened in the past was years. I just wanted to mention that. I hadn't heard anything tonight about what is coming down the road for the master parks plan. And my understanding, we're going to take a very in-depth look at all our parks, addressing all the comments that people said about being tiny and you can't do anything else in them, and so on and so on. And I understand we're going to get some horseshoe pits that we haven't had for a while, and all kinds of other things, maybe some new signage to improve them and so on. But in my mind, I think it's very plausible that through this parks plan and study, we could find a facility or a location for a facility that would rival the soccer complexes, where you could build sixty-four courts. You could have all sorts of shelters, that sort of thing. I firmly believe that. You've got west of the Uni Dome, you've got Burzel Park, wide open spaces there. Aldridge Elementary's got a planned community park area that's not even been discussed, a new high school. To me, it, it kind of spoils the fun when you've got to hang heavy plastic sheeting around to hide the noise or dampen the noise. I know it can be done, obviously. And it only showed it on the west end of the new courts. The current noise is coming to the north and south. I mean, you could go so far as saying we got to shelter that, put up more trees and so on. But one interesting comment I had from someone when I was door knocking around there, they said in the morning, somebody was using like a loudspeaker bullhorn to announce who's next or something like that. I mean, that's pretty invasive noise. And I got to take what they say, whether they, you heard it or not. I mean, I'm just saying, this is what I heard. So bringing in tournaments, bigger and bigger noise. I used to do the slow pitch softball. Man, we had crazy parties, crazy times, loud noise, you know? The fact that we're a hundred and fifty feet from a home, eight feet driveway, something like that, I'm concerned. And I feel like the, I'm all about processes as a financial planner and going through all the components of an analysis. If Mr. Sapi or someone on staff could explain the details of the master parks plan, what we're really going to be doing, and whoever gets to do that, Chase or...
I can answer that question. We're still working internally on what the request for proposals and qualifications will be. But as we've mentioned at goal setting, it would take a look at our existing parks, what are some of the assets of those parks, what are some trends in recreational use, and what might be some possibilities to, and what parks might need some reinvigoration, others that are working well. And also, we talked about with council about how we were really seeking to identify what is an appropriate amount of land that should be dedicated through a new subdivision to make sure that our parks continue in appropriate sizes for all of our area. You know, there are small parks, there are medium, there are larger parks. You need a variety of sizes because they all have different purposes. And so the plan would speak to that and help us develop a schedule of how we should be investing for the next ten, fifteen, twenty years.
Okay, sounds pretty inclusive, as it should.
I hope so.
Yeah, right. Where are we at? You said we're just starting to put together what we want to know from the consultants?
The funding is set by the CIP and the budget that was just approved for fiscal twenty-five and twenty-six for this project. So we're working internally on the document that asks for consultants to give us a proposal, including a cost proposal, so we can bring a contract forward. That's probably sometime this summer that you'll see a contract.
Okay, so then we're looking at before shovels hit the parks a year?
The plan will probably take a year to a year and a half to get back in front of council for a request to adopt so that we can start looking at the CIP for what projects we need to identify.
Like I said, I'm pragmatic, the analytic. I favor that route. I know many of you want to go right now, and I understand. Health and welfare of the citizens is very important, as many of you have mentioned, as the health and welfare of the people that are around the edges that don't play. So there's a balance there. I'm leaning towards the pause of this, and I don't know how that would work. That's part of the reason, during the public hearing three weeks ago, I was on the verge of voting no, voting no. And I, I, you know, for the sake of Dustin not being the only one, I was, should have voted no at that time. It would have been still a go-ahead anyway. But as I, I know Gil was concerned, and I wish he could be on the speaker in one way or another. He had the same ideas that North Cedar, we have flood buyout property. And whether we have several complexes for pickleball, it sounds very feasible. It's multiplying exponentially almost, it seems. To me, everything's on the table. I just, you know, analyzing things maybe too much, but I hear everything everybody says, and I, you know, we're not, somebody said banning, banning pickleball. I can't remember who said that. Definitely not, definitely not. So, kind of rambling. And you do, you stay nervous. I'm nervous after seven years up here, so. Did I say everything I was supposed to say?
Good at faking it.
I'm good at faking it? Okay.
I think we all are.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Chrisman.
First of all, yes, thank you, everyone, for coming. These are two wonderful communities. I see that the neighbors have all been talking to each other and connecting, and I hope that maybe some new relationships have formed there. Well, obviously, you know, a friendship starting out of, please be quiet in my neighborhood is like not the best way to start, at least its new friends. And the pickleball club, you are very bright, lots of neon colors, and I see all of your many costumes and your themed pickleball nights, and that's very tempting for me because I do love a costume. But, you know, I think that in this situation, we have seen from Mr. Sapi, the history of this project goes back a long ways. And, you know, we recognize as a council that we have some room for improvement with our communication and the way that we communicate things out to our citizens. You know, I know that many of you were able to attend that meeting, and we hope that those meetings are the best opportunity for you to share your perspectives. You know, that's not always the case if a plan is not fully formed. You don't get to see every single part of it right at that time, and that can pose challenges. But I, I'm a parks person. I like to say I'm not outdoorsy, I'm outsidey. I don't want to go hiking, but I love to go sit in a park in a lawn chair. It's kind of my thing. And we've got a lot of great parks. And I think they all pose various challenges. You know, if you live near Overman Park and you're not a municipal band person, well, I can't relate, but I can see how that might be a bit annoying, you know? And, and I think we just have to take those things into consideration, and hopefully, we can in the future, put pickleball courts in more places. You know, it sounds like there's a lot of enthusiasm, and the enthusiasm grows, and maybe at some point in time, there will be, you know, a larger outdoor complex or an indoor complex. Who knows what that will look like? And maybe the pressure will be alleviated from Orchard Hill then. But I think this opportunity is presenting itself to us now, and it has been, and that we need to embrace using our parks and getting as many people as we can in our parks all the time. It is going to create a wonderful sense of community. And again, I, I know that faces challenges with noise, but it's, it is just a great place to be. And so, you know, I'm, I'm really encouraged by the conversations that we're having here. And again, thank you all for speaking and giving your time.
Thank you, Councilwoman Chrisman.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, take it.
So I, I don't want to repeat whatever everyone else said, but I will say, I do appreciate all the folks that reached out, either by phone call, email. When folks say it was a nice group to speak with, it was, and that makes a difference. You know, this position, although we all signed up to do it, sometimes, you know, we are human, so it's nice to be nice. I've been on the council since two thousand twenty. I recall the pickleball folks coming in over and over and over in a very proud group. And some nights, it's what got me through meetings. Whenever it's a bleak meeting, and you look and see these great people doing, I mean, we talk about private-public partnership. We talk about doing great things for your community. It's very inspiring. And so, you know, I don't want folks to not think, because I, I heard this, this comment of maybe not taking into consideration folks' thoughts. And I want to assure you, that is not the case in my head, because, you know, I will say, this was a, not a bumpy road at all. I don't recall any bumps in the conversation on pickleball until three weeks ago. And while I will never turn anybody away from, you know, speaking their mind, trust me, when I went home that night, I thought about pickleball. I went, I went to sleep thinking about pickleball. I thought in my own head, did I do something wrong? I woke up thinking about pickleball. My husband wants to know why I'm going to stop talking about pickleball and the worries of it, because who wants to hurt their community? Once you get back into your head and you calm yourself down and you think about, okay, this is part of this job, right? Sometimes every once in a while, you've got a, an item that there's no controversy, but we have a lot of controversial things. And maybe if you're not in this realm, you don't really notice it, but it does weigh on your mind. But once I got back into my head, and I kind of thought about what, you know, and I've made some notes here, my, my head gets messy sometimes. So again, I love the public-private partnership. I, I feel like the, the, the concerns, I've, I've heard your concerns. I know I've had conversation with mayor and staff, and from tonight's meeting, I'm hearing that the, the concerns are heard, and also from the pickleball folks, especially the noise part. I, I think that's, and it's not unique to hear. It sounds like the industry as a whole recognizes that noise is a concern, and they're making different equipment and whatnot to help address that. So I, I have heard that concern. I'm just reading things I drafted down. I, I love the, the growth, the, the sense of community. I love the physical and mental health aspect of it. You get stuck in this like yucky place of, ugh, you know, I don't know if you watch the news or whatever, and it's like you feel kind of hopeless, and then stuff, like there's a little part of your community that really makes a difference, and that makes a huge difference in a lot of us, especially if you've ever suffered from any sort of mental health depression. And I will speak that, I, I can go down a rabbit hole of depression, so thank you for that. I, I want to say that I trust the process, and I guess I'm, now I'm speaking to the council folks. The majority of this council, and Gil's not here, but the majority have been through this whole process. And, and like I said, I don't recall that we've had much, you know, any, I think we pretty much just said, yep, keep on going. So the, the pickleball folks came to the city, the city staff worked with the pickleball folks to get a plan, came into, well, it came to Parks and Rec, and they, so the whole process of going to Parks and Rec, which are a whole separate set of volunteers and citizens, they said okay to it. Then it came to us. We've seen new folks a few times, and we've said, okay. And not only that, but we took their money. So we took their money, and I guess, and I'm not trying to like take away from anybody's feelings, because I know that, you know, I also need to say this. The two thousand twenty-two is when this conversation started. The Parks Master Plan, that was part of goal setting last year. So to me, they're two separate things. I hope that the Parks Master Plan says, hey, the Parks Master Plan says, hey, you should do a pickleball court here and here and here. That'd be real great. But this is a different conversation. And we've gotten to the point where we've taken these people's money, this Cedar Falls, community foundations come in, they've got grants that are at risk. While I understand the concerns, if we delay this or don't, I mean, obviously, it's up to a vote, but I mean, think of how we would look. And think of how, who would want to work with us? And we talk about, okay, sometimes we get into thinking about tax money. Okay, you know how taxes stay down? There are many different ways. I think we kind of touched on it earlier about, you know, things that generate revenue, bringing people to town to spend their money and maybe stay here. But also, what helps to keep the taxes down, when you have a capital improvement project or a quality of life project, you get community members who do the work of raising, what was it, 40, how much, 40-some percent?
Forty-two percent.
Okay. So it's kind of like, the ship, in my mind, at least in Kelly's mind, has sailed. And I am very proud. Anyway, I'm rambling, but I just hope that that's a real heavy thing, as you cast your vote, to know where we're at in the process. This is not a just happen. This is not a, oh, the Parks Master Plan. This happened way before the Parks Master Plan planned. That was, that was goal setting. That was a goal for this year, and thank God we're doing it, because we haven't done it since 1996. But they're two separate things. The other thing, and I'll shut up after this, we act like, I hope to God we don't have any major flooding, but we act like flooding never happens in this city. Look back at recent history, okay? So when we talk about putting stuff in a flood plain, I love dreaming for that area. I'll keep dreaming with you. But, ugh, again, I trust the folks that kind of know, like, nope, flood buyouts don't get to do this. And we took the money for a flood buyout, so we don't get to do that. That's it.
Thank you, Councilor Dunn.
I must. Mr. Mayor, well, I will really try not to repeat. I agree with everything you said. First of all, I do appreciate the discourse, and I won't elaborate on that. You've heard that from everybody. I thought the presentation was wonderful in showing what's available for noise mitigation efforts. I did do the research, because I started on council in January of 2024, and this, I believe, was on the CIP in 2022. It's not misidentified. We know what exactly what it was for. And then there have been several efforts since then, Parks and Recreation. So it's been in the works with, I know that Gil's not here, but several of the people that are on the council. And to Ms. Dunn's point, no objection. I understand that there might be some concerns about notice and things like that in the past. What I do appreciate are the mitigation efforts that are going to be available now and in the future. Paddles are evolving, balls are evolving, the acoustic technology is evolving. And so I think it would be a shame to throw away or delay all of this work, and to your point, taking the money, and really doing about face, which would not look well for the city, when many, if not all of the complaints can be easily addressed down the road with better technology and other tweaking. And I think the city has shown a willingness to work in that regard. So I take the, Mr. Stubbs' point, I take the point, this is a park improvement plan. There are other things that will help improve the park in addition to adding the courts. And so, and parks should be busy. It's a public space, and I think it's great to have a lot of people show up at them. I live next to a park, so I feel your pain, okay? It just depends on what event might be going over there. But I, I think the sound mitigation, which I think was the initial and primary concern when this all started out, is easily answered with the fabric around the fencing and additional improvements to technology down the road. So I agree with you, Ms. Dunn.
Mr. Mayor. If I may, I think it'd be good to just provide a little bit of clarity. I think we may still come away with different perspectives of what the process looks like. But through goal setting and the CIP, the discussion was an interest in expanding the pickleball complex at Orchard Hill Park. That was given assent. And the dialogue at those times is always, this is just a plan. This is just a roadmap. We'll be able to talk about budgetary constraints and other impacts when we see the actual plan. So I very much believe that discussion three weeks ago is part of the process. That was the time to say, well, hold up now. Because prior to that, it didn't have all the meat on the bones. We had a skeleton that we all agreed to for years now, as you all well know. And then we went, wait a minute, what is it going to mean for this? To Councilman Hawbaker's point, I think the noise mitigation was done. I actually went out to the park, and Hannah said I'm a nerd, but I actually went out to the park and measured it this afternoon. I met with some of the residents there yesterday, but I went out this afternoon. And I'm not saying you're wrong, okay? You're entitled to your perceptions. The noise variance that I observed while standing inside the pickleball court alleys didn't vary by more than 10 decibels above the sound of the wind that was constant, right? So there's a breeze blowing, and the pickleball dinking was just barely above that, by about five to 10 decibels. In the interest of calibrating this, when another individual said his app was saying it was 22 decibels, this has been sitting up here running all night, and it never went above 60. So there's about a 40 there. While I was on the pickleball courts, it went between 70 and 79. So that, if it's 40, that means it's 30 decibels, because this is not a professional device. I'm giving those numbers just to show that it's not all that bad. I do think that the safety concerns that we had, I'd like to see, Mr. Rogers, I guess this question would be, is it improper to try and amend the project to do a one-lane entrance and exit? Or would that be improper because of the public notice? We should stick to a change order.
As far as I know, the bid was based upon a certain parameter, and so by contract, then we'd have to do a change order, I believe. The engineers probably know more about this.
Yeah. I was checking on the legalese on that side. So Mr. Shragi, for your side of it, how could we go about that in the interest of compromising, one, making sure that the acoustica barrier, whatever it's called, is installed on the western side once completed, and potentially putting in a one-lane? I think that would be a good compromise. We've already heard that stop signs will be included on McLean and exiting the park. I'd like to see a stop sign on the parking lot that says, take turns in the one-way on the way out, so people are forced to slow down. And I'll reference the previous Parks Master Plan from, what, '96, that says it must have sidewalks. So I think narrowing the lane gives us the opportunity to add that sidewalk. If we add the sidewalk with the double-width lane, I think it puts those trees in a compromised state. Again, I'm not an arborist, so I don't know if those trees would have to come down. But how do we come to that compromise of a one-lane?
So back to your original question, as long as you don't significantly modify the scope of the project, your ability to make modifications after the bid, you can do that. As far as the drive entrance, as I mentioned before, it's currently proposed as a 21 feet from face of curb to face of curb. There's no existing curbs right now. It's approximately 15 to 16 feet. So oncoming cars do off-track at times, and if it's wet conditions, they are traveling in the adjacent, it's not on the adjacent property, it's still within city right-of-way, but causing some rutting and off-tracking, so the curbs will help with that. By narrowing that up a few feet, say we go from 21 to 18, we'll be able to accommodate for a sidewalk on the east side.
Okay. Okay. And for clarification, if anybody didn't understand what I was saying, this is currently reading at 68, which is totally illegal, because our decibel limit is 55. This is improperly calibrated. The pickleballs were only 10 decibels louder than I'm speaking right now, okay? So it's, it's not that bad. I'll yield back after that. Thanks.
Any additional council discussion?
All right. Seeing none. Quick comment I do want to make is, because I think just having talked with everybody on council, listening to everyone, is regardless of the decision here, I know this council is going to do the work to make sure whatever decisions made, that the future path is looked at. If it's to not do it, we're looking at whether our locations, making sure it moves forward. If it is to do it, the sound issues are going to get addressed. When we're in there, we're going to make sure we're making the effort to address those. I know, knowing we've got some, it sounds like hopefully flexibility in the budget to be able to say, how do we do this the right way? Otherwise, seeing no discussion, we will look then for a roll call vote on these two items combined.
Five voting aye, one voting nay.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that motion does carry, but just for the record, Mr. Rogers, if you could clarify what Schultz's vote means, since he's not here, that's a, kind of as a no vote?
He's absent, so it doesn't count in the total.
Okay, it just doesn't count in total. So that motion does carry. So again, thank you, everyone, for the conversation. We've got a few more items here to go to, so we will get on with those. But just wanted to say thank you for the time coming in. So then we will look for allow bills and claims. Actually, we'll give a moment just for everyone to, so we can start calling everybody out of order.
I would have pulled back.
I'll stop out, too.
Susan sat here after we...
Thanks, Kim.
At the end of the meeting, she goes, damn, I should have...
I'm like, great, it's a record.
Just a few minutes. This is normal for you guys last year.
This is early.
All right. If we got everyone here, then we can jump back. We just got these last few things. So council, ready?
Ready.
He did it twice. He said two things.
All right. So we're going to look, item number 63, allow bills and claims for May 6, 2024. Do we have a motion to allow bills and claims?
So moved.
Got that, Kim?
I want to third that.
And a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any council updates or announcements?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Christman.
It's me again. Hi, everyone. If anyone's still listening, May 11 is Stamp Out Hunger, the food drive put on by USPS and the National Association of Letter Carriers. And my father-in-law is a letter carrier, so I must make this announcement. You can leave a food donation at your door, and your letter carrier will pick it up. The donations go directly to our local food bank. And it's just a great way to not only support our food bank, but also your letter carrier. Thank you.
Is it May 11?
May 11.
This Saturday.
Yes.
Can I piggyback off that?
Of course.
Because last year, a postal worker came and spoke, and then encouraged all of us to go down and help. So of course, I did on the dock. So I know this year I can't, because it's the same day as hazardous waste take back. I'm already committed to that. But I will tell you, it's a lot of work getting all that food off those trucks. And the more the merrier, and they gave you a nice, I don't know, potluck dinner. So they're always looking, citizens, council members, whoever, they're always looking for folks to help get the stuff off the trucks and onto the pallets to get over to the food bank.
Thank you both, here. Any other council updates and announcements? And any other council referrals? We do not have any pressing referrals. Seeing none, look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.